You work through that step with Donna? Chloe, I'm ready whenever you are. Everybody's... We're all ready?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to this City of Charleston Planning Commission meeting of February the 17th, 2021. I'd like to point out that the commission members are appointed by Charleston City Council, and they are volunteers, and I appreciate their work. I'm Will Reed, who's in attendance to the meeting tonight via Zoom. Mr. Jimmy Bailey, Ms. Laquita Bryant Jenkins, Ms. Erica Harrison, Ms. Donna Jacobs, Ms. Angie Johnson, Mr. Harry Lasain. And I think Ms. Lempasus may be joining us. She may be running a little bit late. I know she's on the road, but everyone else is here, so. The way we operate is I'll read an item from the agenda into the record, and then we'll hear from staff on that item. Then we'll hear from the applicant. Then we'll hear from anyone supporting the application, and anyone opposed to the application. And then we will let the applicant, if he'd like, to respond to any concerns about the application. At that time, we'll close the public hearing, and the commission members will discuss, make a motion, and move forward. Mr. Morgan, I think I just want to make sure that everything on the agenda, you'll let us know when you introduce us to any staff members who's presenting tonight, as well as any items that are not going to be on the agenda that were listed.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so I'm Christopher Morgan. I'm City Planning Manager. I'll be presenting a number of these cases. Anna Hart, our Senior Zoning Planner, will be presenting cases as well. Lee Batchelder may be chiming in. Philip Overcash is helping us with technical issues. Chloe Stubber is Planner who makes the whole meeting run. It runs through Chloe, so you may hear her voice, too. And Marcy Grant is our Clerk. And the... I don't think we have any deferrals. I'm not seeing any. No sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I know we had an approval of minutes. I'd like to take that at the end, if that's okay, and just jump right into the rezonings. And then we'll go to the approval of minutes to make sure everybody's had a chance to peruse them, whatever. They can glance at them maybe during the meeting when it's quiet or whatever, so. Is that okay with you, Mr. Morgan?
That sounds good.
Okay. Rezoning is number one, a portion of 214 and 216 Spring Street, West Side Peninsula, TMS number 4601101017, approximately .025 acres. Request rezoning of the portion of the subject property's own mixed-use slash workforce housing, MU2WH, from Old City Height District 2.5 Classification to Old City Height District 3 Classification. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is one that you all saw at your last meeting, and there was some confusion and a discrepancy in reference to the height change at the rear of the property. For the bulk of this property, you all recommended the height change from the five to six stories, and that is making its way through the approval process. It'll be a public hearing at City Council next Tuesday. There needed to be clarification about this northwest corner of the building because it's in currently a two-and-a-half-story height district. And you can't do a jump all the way up to five or six or something like that. The way our height district works, you can only do the next step up, which in this instance would be to a three. So the applicant has said, yes, three would work, and they would like to move forward with the three application for this northwest corner of their building. The rest of the building is moving forward at the sixth recommendation. And I'll show you some images. It's, of course, in the Neighborhood District, and you heard from the Neighborhood last time in support, but it backs up to the West Side Neighborhood. Here's an image of the actual area on the site. Some of the buildings have been demoed since this time. And of course, it does back up to Ashton Street, which is Neighborhood Street. That's where there's that big break in the heights. You know, we are allowing greater heights along Spring and lower heights along the smaller streets that are more neighborhood scale like Ashton. We recommend approval of this, just like we recommended the approval of the item for you last week, last month, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Is Mr. Roberts here to present? On this, Chloe, do you know?
Yes, he's here, and I've just promoted him to panelists, so Jeffrey, you should be able to share your video and audio.
Jeff, thanks. Whenever you're ready, you go ahead.
I think you're muted.
Mr. Roberts, you with us?
He's still muted, I think.
My apologies. I was speaking into the mute button. So I will restart.
You go ahead whenever you're ready.
I wanted to say, this will be very short. Thank you, Mr. Karish. Thank you, Christopher and Chloe. Board members, thank you for the kind words and the reception this project got at the last Planning Commission meeting. And as Ms. Harrison duly noted at the end, this little residual piece in the corner seemed to be an anomaly which we caught, and we're just trying to square up the height, and we'll do a little reconfiguration of our building, and that'll get stepped down to three stories just to sort of square it all up and make the building rectangular, as Bello Garris is doing the architecture. But again, we really appreciate the reception we got last time, and thank you. We look forward to moving this project along and getting it built. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Chloe, I see there's no one that's signed up to speak in favor or opposed, so I'm assuming we can close out the public hearing on this?
Correct.
Okay, great. So that'll close out the public aspect of this. Commission members, comments, questions, or motion?
This is Erica Harrison. I'd like to go ahead for approval of this application. You know, I think our sentiments from the last meeting remain true, and I'm glad that we were, that he, that Mr. Roberts has been able to make this half-story leap to kind of square up this part of the parcel, so I move for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second-
Ms. Harrison, is any other question?
I'll second that.
Go ahead, Ms. Jacobs.
I'll second Ms. Harrison's motion.
Great, thank you. So there's a motion by Ms. Harrison, second by Ms. Jacobs. Any comments or questions? Again, we thank you, Mr. Roberts, for your work, not only in this project, but throughout the city that you've done. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Great. Ms. Bryant Jenkins?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Great, Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Thank you. Ms. Lasain?
Aye in favor.
Great. I don't know, I don't think, Chloe, clarifying one, I don't think Ms. Lempasus is on with us yet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, great. And I'm in favor as well, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor and none opposed. So that carries. Number two on the agenda is on rezoning is 569 571 King, Cannonboro, Elliottboro Peninsula, TMS number 4601, 202070, approximately .12 acres. Request rezoning of the subject properties from General Business GB to mixed-use workforce housing, MU2WH. Mr. Morgan?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a very small existing structure and parcel on King Street. Just over a tenth of an acre. And it's been a commercial building for many, many years, and the applicant can give you some of the history on this. But they are going to do wholesale renovation of the building and are interested in using upper floors of the existing structure for housing. They are requesting the mixed-use workforce housing. Of course, they would have to abide by all the standards of the MU2 workforce housing standards, requirements, and would also have the ground floor retail uses still that are in place, and some new ones as well. Just to give you a sense of where this is, this is, of course, in our urban core recommended area along King Street, so that's where we do recommend for the MU2 workforce housing changes. It is the heart of the city. It has access to transit. It has access to other services that help make the density in this location work well. We have an aerial photo of the property, and you can see, of course, existing King Street, mixed commercial and accommodations across the street, mixed commercial and accommodations and residential to the north, and mixed commercial and residential to the south here. And here are the structures at present. This is an oblique image of the property, and you can see how it has had some deterioration over the years, so this renovation will be a good one for the King Street area. It is right here on the corner. Here is a street view image. There is presently a corner store in this location, and this is a store, I was actually by there the other day and noticed that the hours of operation said to 1:00 and 2:00 a.m., so it's definitely a late-night facility, a facility that caters to, you know, folks who are out and about in this area at that time of day. It is a convenience store, though it's not like a late-night bar or restaurant or something like that. And the applicant can speak to whether that store will be staying there during the renovation. But that is part of the reason for the MU2 workforce housing as opposed to like a MU1 that would have closing hours of 11:00 p.m. Here's a view on King Street looking to the north. It's on the left over here. Again, here's Cannon Street, it's right at the corner. Then looking to the south, King Market, right here is the subject property and nearby commercial businesses. And just across the street here, looking down Cannon Street. And then the applicant provided us a few slides just to give you a sense of, you know, what the building is and the unique nature of the building. This is an actual survey, so you see how the existing structures take up a good bit of the property, and they'll be reusing these existing structures and renovating them. And these are just an image of the work that, of course, we'll have to go to BAR that would be part of the new renovation of those structures, but it's essentially bringing back the existing historic structures. That is what we have from the applicant, and we are recommending approval of this. It does conform to the comprehensive plan, and it makes sense, you know, historic structure for the rehabilitation of that historic structure, so staff recommends approval.
Great, thank you, Mr. Morgan. It's a busy area down there, especially in the evening, that's for sure. But I think Ms. Jenkins has signed up to present this. Is that right, Chloe? Is she available?
That's correct. Ms. Jenkins, you've been promoted to panelists, so you should be able to unmute yourself, and please share your video as well if you can.
Ms. Jenkins, you go ahead whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Elaine Jenkins. I'm a member of and the attorney for the Jenkins family who owns the property that you have just seen. Number 569 King, number 571 King, and it's also known as Number One Cannon. The three-framed building sit on a lot that measures approximately .12 acre. The courtyard located immediately behind the three buildings and fronting on Cannon Street measures approximately 1,900 square feet and is used for parking. Two of the buildings are two-story, and the third is a one-story building that is sandwiched between the two two-story buildings. The 1881 reported plat for this property shows one of the two-story framed buildings, and that's the building that's located at the corner of King and Cannon, now known as 571 King and Number One Cannon. And when the Jenkins family purchased this property in January of 1971, the second two-story building and the one-story building had already been erected on the site. So in the intervening 89 years between 1881 and December of 1970, those two buildings were erected. Currently, the property consists of four commercial spaces on the ground level. Three of the four commercial spaces front on King Street, and the fourth fronts on Cannon, and is known as Number One A Cannon. And these four commercial spaces total approximately 3,300 square feet. On the second level of each of the two-story buildings is one residential unit, and these two residential units total approximately 2,700 square feet. And this property, as was said, is currently zoned general business. Several years ago, when the Jenkins family decided that they wanted to redevelop this property, they did not renew the leased spaces as the lease terms expired. So all of the spaces in those buildings are now vacant except the King Street Mart, which leases the ground level of Number 571 King. The owners of that mart, Ahmed and Sheri El-Halawani, have been tenants and have occupied that space for more than 30 years. They've been excellent tenants, and we would like to have them return once the building has been renovated. They have the right of first refusal to come back, and they plan to. Also, when the family decided to redevelop the property, they retained a structural engineering company to conduct an extensive evaluation of the three buildings to assess their structural integrity. So the redevelopment of the buildings will include repairing and strengthening the foundations of each of these three buildings, gutting the interior of the three buildings, and rebuilding better by bringing the mechanical systems up to code and beyond, wiring the buildings to accommodate the new technology like high-speed internet and cable, utilizing green building practices and materials where feasible so as to reduce the carbon footprints of the buildings. And that is meaning that we will use no voca, low-voc paints, low-flush toilets, energy-efficient windows. We will properly insulate and ventilate the buildings and install a new energy-efficient roofing system. The size and configuration of each of the four commercial spaces will remain as they are currently after the renovations. The major changes occur on the second level of these, of the buildings. There is an attic in each of the two-story buildings, and those addics are currently not being used. What the family proposes to do is to make two apartments on the second floor of each of the two-story buildings. One efficiency apartment and one two- or three-bedroom apartment by extending into the attic and creating a livable space there, and we intend to do that by adding dormers to each of the two-story buildings. And then we propose to create an efficiency apartment above the one-story building that's sandwiched there in between. So the second floor of the buildings will house five residential units. And thus, we have applied to rezone the property from general business to mixed-use to workforce housing. The family's vision for the five residential units is to designate at least two or more of them for affordable housing in keeping with the vision of our late parents. As to the courtyard, we propose to brick it and replace the wooden fence with a wrought iron fence in keeping with the age and character of the buildings. The courtyard will continue to be used for parking for the commercial and residential tenants. The Jenkins family formerly owned Number Three Cannon, which adjoins the courtyard of the property before you. We redeveloped Number Three Cannon with the assistance of Mr. Eddie Bynes and the City's Department of Housing and Community Development. And both of the residential units at Number Three Cannon were designated for affordable housing. And we sold that building several years ago to leverage our redevelopment of the property before you. The family has shared its vision for the redevelopment of 569 and 571 King and Number One Cannon with Ms. Johnson and with Mr. Bynes, both of whom have been very helpful as we navigate the various city processes for approval. The family has assembled a team to assist with this redevelopment project. I will serve as the project manager, as I did with the with the redevelopment of Number Three Cannon. We have an architect aboard, general contractor, structural engineer. We have a financial advisor. We're working with two realtors, a residential Realtor and a commercial Realtor, to help us market the new spaces. Once they're renovated, we want to pre-lease them, and we've reached out to several funding sources. That's my presentation. Thank you very much, and I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have about the project or about the buildings.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. That's a wonderful presentation, very thorough, and I certainly appreciate it. You've done all your homework, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think there's one, the only thing I see is one written comment. Is that correct, Chloe?
Yes, that's correct. I can read it now.
You will read that, or?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, this is from Marion Hawkins with the Cannonboro-Elliottboro Neighborhood Association regarding rezoning number two. Dear Chairman Karish and commission members, on behalf of the Cannonboro-Elliottboro Neighborhood Association, I want to convey two concerns with their request. First, the applicant's property is located in a late-night overlay. The MU2 workforce housing zoning would allow a bar to operate until 2:00 a.m. Late-night bars and their patrons are a significant negative livability issue with Cannonboro-Elliottboro. This block of Upper King Street is currently overcrowded with bars, which normally empty out at 2:00 a.m., then overload the street and neighborhood. We would encourage the owners to prohibit leasing space to a bar. Also, the MU2 workforce housing zoning would allow more housing units on the second floor of each parcel. We would encourage the owner to implement the much-needed workforce housing units instead of opting for the fee-in lieu. That's all.
All right, thank you, Chloe. Ms... Sorry, I just had to have my... Ms. Jenkins, would you like to comment? Thank you. You go ahead.
Well, as to the concern about a bar, all of the inquiries that we have received about the property, none of them has been for the use of a bar. The store in the corner, the El-Halawanis, will return. That corner has been very lucrative for them, and we look forward to having them back. The business that was at 569 King Street was a record shop, and it was our family-owned record shop. It's now online. We've had inquiries there for that property for a dress shop. And the other property, there's interest in making, in having a dance studio there, but we're not interested in having a bar there, but different types of properties. And as we spoke with both of the realtors, well, the commercial Realtor in particular, advised against a restaurant there, a bar there, things that are just, and it's not what we want either. So as to the concerns about the bar, they needn't be. I really don't understand the point she was asking about the residential housing units on the second floor. What is that concern?
Just to...
I don't...
To clarify the, what was in the letters, the concern was to encourage to create affordable housing, to designate the residential, a portion of the residential units, workforce housing on-site versus pay the fee-in lieu.
Yes, as I said in the presentation, providing affordable housing was one of the visions of our parents for the property, and we're going to follow through with that. And, you know, currently, well, when the properties were being leased, they were affordable housing units, so we will continue doing that on the second floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. And I guess a lot of these folks get concerned. They understand what you've done with the property, and when we rezone something, they're concerned. I agree with you. There's too many bars on King Street now, but anyway, if we rezone it, if you were to sell the property, I know you're intending to have a bar, but somebody could. Do you see what I mean? So that's where some of, I think, some of the concern comes in. We appreciate it, and that's going to close the public aspect of this. So I'll ask if there's any questions, comments, or motions from commission members.
Bailey, has his hand raised?
Mr. Bailey, you go ahead.
I was going to make a motion, but I think someone else had their hand up. Does someone have a question? If not, I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bailey makes a motion for approval. Any other questions, comments, or a second?
I'll second that motion.
Great. Ms. Lasain seconds the motion. So we have a motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Ms. Lasain to approve it, the application. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Great. Ms. Bryant Jenkins?
Aye in favor.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Great. Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Great. Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Thank you. Ms. Lasain?
Aye in favor.
I am in favor.
Great. And I'm in favor as well. So that's seven in favor and none opposed. So that that application for rezoning passes.
Currently, we have we have Sunday now.
Okay, great. Sunday, I didn't mean to exclude you. I know you said you would give me a thumbs up. Your your voice was hurting you, but you you, did you hear that last application? Would you like to vote on that? I think she was going to give me a
You're on mute, Sunday.
I don't want to vote on this.
Okay.
I didn't hear the whole application.
Okay.
No, no. And Ms. Lampis is having a little, I know, a little laryngitis, so she's going to give me some hand signals. I hope they're all good ones, though. That's all. But so that motion passes seven in favor, none opposed. The next item on the agenda is rezoning number three. Properties on St. Philip's Line Street, King Street, Ackerman Court, Cannon Borough Elliot Borough Peninsula, TMS number four six zero zero eight oh two one one one, one one four, one one eight through one two one, and portion of TMS four six zero zero eight oh two oh one five, one oh nine, one ten, one twelve, one seventeen, and one twenty-two. Approximately point eight, three acres request rezoning of the subject properties from GB, general business to mixed-use workforce housing, MU one WH, and to rezone a portion of TMS number four six oh oh eight oh two oh one five, one oh nine, one ten, one eleven, or one twelve from Height District, classification two point five dash three, to Height District, classification three point five as amended. Mr. Morgan?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a lot of parcels here, a lot going on on this block here. We're moving up King Street to north of Columbus.
May I interrupt for just a second?
Yes.
Yo, I'm sorry. And I should have said, yeah, and I appreciate that, Mr. Bailey. And I did get a form that Mr. Bailey is going to reclusive himself from this item and the next item, item number three and four from the agenda. I apologize, Mr. Bailey. I meant to say that. So thank you.
I I don't know if how this works on Zoom. I know if we were in person, I'd leave the room. Do I just?
Yeah.
Maybe.
If you can actually leave the meeting and then Phillip will send you a text message when we are done with this item and you can rejoin.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
All right.
Mr. Morgan, you go ahead.
Okay. So I'm going to describe both of the requests here. And we have updated our maps here. In other words, we showed a broader area being subject to the height district changes. And we have corrected that. The applicant alerted us to the error and we've corrected that and we'll show you how we've corrected. I believe all planning commissioners sent the updated height district amendments as well. But essentially, on these parcels, first off, we're going to have a rezone. They're currently general business. And they they would be rezoned. This is the crosshatch parcels to the MU one workforce housing. I'm sorry. These are the dotted parcels that would be rezoned to the MU one workforce housing. And then they would also go a portion of this from the two and a half, three height district to the three and a half. And the area that is subject to that is this area here in yellow, right here. Previously, we'd shown it with the implication that it went all the way to St. Philip's Street. It's actually about thirty feet further in. And we will show an image that that helps clarify that. The surrounding properties that are not subject to this, there there are a couple of houses in this location here. There is property to the south. There are other houses on St. Philip that are not part of this. So just to clarify that. Then on rezoning four, this is a request of rezoning of the subject properties from GB to mixed-use workforce housing MU two. And this is the crosshatched area. So this is going to the MU two because it lines up with, so keeping the MU one along St. Philip, going to MU two for these properties that are on King Street. And also rezone a portion from Height District six. This area in pink would go from Height District six to Height District seven. So these are the requests that are before you, and these are the corrected maps that are before you. So we'll kind of go through a kind of surrounding area background. So
Mr. Morgan, I guess I should have, Chris, I'm sorry, I guess I should have, since we're taking three and four together. Let me just read very quickly number four as well. So it's in the record. Is that okay?
Okay.
Properties on St. Philip's Line Street, King Street, and Ackerman Court, Peninsula four six tax max number four six zero zero eight oh two oh one one through oh one three, one three three, and a portion of TMS four six zero zero eight oh two oh one oh, oh one five, one oh nine, one ten, one twelve, and one seventeen. And that's approximately one point nine acres. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. You go ahead. I'm sorry.
So these are some images from the applicant, but they helped to further delineate. They don't show the tax map numbers, but they helped to further delineate. Again, the areas that are in the dotted portion, it's about ninety feet in depth, is going to MU one workforce housing. This is along St. Philip Street. St. Philip Street is right here. And then the portion of the property that is going to MU two is right here with the diagonal stripes, and it's along King Street. King Street is right here. It's a hundred and thirty-three feet south of Line Street. There is also this little ten-foot gap that is not getting rezoned here near the intersection of Bogart and Philip, St. Philip. To the right here, we have the height changes. Again, the area in the crosshatch here is going from the three to three and a half story. It's thirty feet in from St. Philip Street. So the first thirty feet off of St. Philip Street here is not being changed, nor is the property here at Line and Philip being changed from a height standpoint. And then the seven-story portion is twenty-five feet in from King Street as is is the current designation. A hundred and thirty-three feet down from Line Street and down to a future property line here, almost in line with Bogart Street. And this is the area that would be requesting the seven-story going from the six to seven. I'm sorry. Yes. Going to the next image, these properties are both in the urban core in our comprehensive plan. And of course, this is where the greatest densities and the greatest heights of buildings would be in the urban core. There are gradients in our height districts that that take the height even higher as you get between King and Meeting Street. But these are in an area that is in line with having greater height as per the comprehensive plan. This is overall aerial of the existing properties. There are no more structures on the property, I don't believe. There might be a a security guard substation here. Actually, I think it's down here. But these are parking lots that have been cleared and some parcels at the corner here at St. Philip in line that have a few trees on them in this location. Here's an aerial image. Again, this is looking, this is King Street, running north-south. The vacant area here, the parking area here, the existing houses, they're not part of the rezoning here. And then the vacant parcel here at the corner of Line and St. Philip Street. Here is a street view of the parcels, and you see some parking on those. Street view, again, more of the parking lot. Street view of the corner of Line and St. Philip. And street view from St. Philip, one of the parking areas along St. Philip at present. Are the residential corner of Ackerman's Court here. And then residential on Line Street. And then a view of King Street South showing the subject properties to the right. And then a view of Line Street showing the subject properties to the south here. To the left, I'm sorry, and St. Philip Street, the overall view of St. Philip Street. And here is St. Philip and Bogart Street looking south. So the parcels are to the left over there, not including these structures. These structures are not part of the rezoning request. So there are some exhibits from the applicant that we have included here. Again, we are not including anything that relates to BAR overall issues because that is not a subject for planning commission. These are just related to the land use and to the overall height allowances that are subject of this request. So this is an image that shows a future structures that could be on the site. Of course, they are all subject to BAR review. But at the corner that remains GB, there would be a structure that is being discussed as office and commercial. And then MU one workforce housing structures here along St. Philip Street. And the exact configuration of those structures is all subject to the AR review. And then a larger structure in the middle with a parking deck that would be wrapped with residential units and have King Street frontages with retail spaces as well. And then a hope for alley connection between King Street and St. Philip in this location here, as well as some other connections in north-south pattern that the applicants can talk about further as well. Here is the same image we just looked at, and we're just kind of repeating it here because it does help clarify where these changes are going on on the property. And then this is the current allowable zoning envelope on the property. Again, six stories, you could build to a maximum with this. Of course, this would all be subject to BAR, but this is the zoning envelope. And then four stories along King Street. And then this is the proposed mass with the current allowable envelope. So you see where it goes up the above the current allowable envelope in these locations here. And then along St. Philip. And then we go to the next. And this is the usable volume, about one hundred twenty-five thousand square feet, only seventeen percent of the allowable zoning envelope. And then this is the overall general additional height request with four stories in this location, but seven stories in a format here. Again, this exact format would be, you know, through the BAR process, but this whole area in here would be allowing up to seven stories with this additional height request. And then the three and a half story height request in this location, and then the existing three-story heights along St. Philip Street here. This is a broader view that shows the, there is a concept, you know, there are no BAR approvals for it yet, but there's a concept for larger building down here to the south for assisted or it's a kind of senior facility to the south. Seven stories, the building that's at the corner of Spring and King in this location here, it's already there. Here's the existing Post and Courier, their production plant and their offices. And then these are some buildings that are underway now here at Line and Meeting Street. These are underway, under construction, fully BAR approved with a nine-story structure here. Another building here adjacent to that on the low line. The low line is coming through here. And then the existing Courier Square, which is a combination of eight-story residential tower on the low line here, and then a six-story office building fronting on Meeting Street. So those are existing. These are under construction. This is, I don't know if this has a BAR approval here or not, this one here, but that's not part of this request. The subject parcels here. This is just to give the overall context that there are some things that are even bigger than it further over towards Meeting and King Streets. And this is, I think, a very significant drawing for the planning commissioner review. So this is kind of eye level from St. Philip Street, showing a three-story structure on the street and how your eye would perceive that from the street level. And how the three and a half story gets pretty much hidden behind that because of the thirty-foot setback here. And then how it gets difficult to see the the seven-story structure back here because of the way the three-story and three and a half story block it and what your eye could perceive in the location here. So this is significant on King Street, of course, pedestrians would, you know, see the four stories here, and it would be difficult or nearly impossible to get to see the top of the seven stories as a pedestrian on King. But as you're further away from King, obviously, it could be seen. And the applicants can speak more to this as they are doing their presentation. So this is an overall image of, again, subject to BAR approval, but of the overall development concept on the site. And they are just now beginning this process by virtue of coming to you all for these MU one and MU two zonings and for the height modifications on the site. So those are the applicant-provided exhibits. So from a staff standpoint, we are supportive of the height requests. We are still interested in working with the applicants on the MU one and MU two sites as far as affordable housing. We would love to have commitments for affordable housing on the site. Of course, that is not required by the ordinance, but we are realizing through our comprehensive plan efforts and through analysis of how the existing MU workforce housing districts are working that, you know, the city is getting some funds for affordable housing, but we are not getting many units actually built on site. So we'd love to work with the owners and development team for more units on the site, and we will be happy to continue to work with them on that. We are working together with the mayor's office and council members in these discussions and hope to have commitments for more units on the site. And with that, we will move on to the comments from the public.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. We'll hear from the, I think.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yes, yeah, because we have, I think, I think that we have three folks, Chloe, who have signed up to speak or present. Is that correct? And we can make them available whenever you're ready.
Yes. Mr. Lebatrau, Mr. Gao, and Mr. Parker, you should have access to unmute and share your video, please.
Gentlemen, y'all go ahead whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me all right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you. I'm, my name is Ben Lebatrau and lead our Carolinas Division for Gray Star. Really excited to be here and partnering again with Evening Post on a really exciting project. Like Christopher said, the past, I don't know, four to six months have been kind of an ongoing dialogue with the city and our neighbors and neighborhoods around us. His conversations, I think, have been very positive. We're really proud of the progress we've made with Cannon Borough Elliot Borough and our surrounding neighbors. And our approach, I think, was was a little unique, you know, it was very healthy, transparent, open. I think we've really uniquely addressed some of the livability concerns of the neighborhood via kind of fairly aggressive restrictions that we've we've agreed to put in place with the neighborhood. We're bringing forth this proposal with a very similar team y'all saw on our first phase of Courier Square. We've got an experienced equality team and, you know, Gray Star is fully committed to the city and the neighborhood, this project. You know, we approached this project and the request tonight based on a few factors is, you know, how do we best respond to the site context? How do we create the best urban design and architecture for this location, you know, while also complying with the comp plan? How do we best respond to the desires and hot points of our surrounding residential and business owners? And I firmly believe we've addressed a lot of those approaches carefully, deliberately through our conversations, you know, and our transparent approach with constituents. You know, via our site plan, you know, Christopher and then went through this, you know, we we took an approach where we tried to break up buildings. There's a focus on lower-rise buildings around the perimeter. We've utilized pedestrian alleys throughout the site in order to break down the mass, provide better connectivity throughout the site and the neighborhood. We discussed the new public alley east and west. We're excited about introducing that to the city. It's going to be a great connection point from the neighborhood over to King Street. On the residential front, I'll address short-term rentals right off the rip here. I know that they're a hot point. I think that we've gone to great lengths with the neighborhood, with historic Charleston, with Preservation Society, and, you know, heading that off and making sure that doesn't happen. You know, we've gone, I think, above and beyond in proposing preclusions to those going forward. Got a smaller office building on the northeast corner. Again, we're keeping that height low. It's in a six-story zone, but we're keeping it at four. And lastly, we've got retail planned along the east side fronting King Street. We want to keep that retail viability on King. On that note, there were concerns from the neighborhood and various groups that, you know, operating hours and late-night uses that have kind of proliferated on this section of Upper King are problematic to the livability of this section. And so, you know, I think we came up with a creative solution of actually going to restrict operating hours within what we're proposing to be the MU two district. You know, a big part of our our concept is the is the alleys throughout. Frankly, we've given up buildable square footage. We've given up places we could build and offer height for these alleys. Again, they they're kind of serving dual purpose for us. They're they're breaking up the site into multiple components, which I think is a lot more palatable, as well as providing connectivity and other opportunities for, you know, kind of residential units to be on the street. Um, you know, Christopher went through it. The we believe that both of these use rezonings are very good fits for the Century Five Plan. We are absolutely within that. You know, there's certain texts in there talking about the densest, most mixed-use portion, urban core consistent of highest density and highest tallest buildings would occur here. All, you know, tech straight from the Century Five Plan. You know, we are currently in GB with an accommodations overlay. So there are currently the ability to do late-night uses here, perhaps accommodation. So there are currently the ability to do late-night uses here, perhaps accommodation. I'm here to tell you what, we have no intention of doing that. The statement earlier on prohibition of S T Rs and operating hours was something that we worked at length with the neighborhood to accomplish. In terms of the height district, I did want to touch on that a little bit. I mean, we we took a pretty creative approach here. You know, our approach was one that took the heights from current standards and kind of moved them up and down. You saw in one of the slides that we let go of a lot of mass. We let go of a lot of building square footage in order to place that height elsewhere. Are we asking for some additional height in the center of the site and behind the St. Philip's building? We are, but I think we're very, very strategic in that approach. We believe we're doing this to be responsible, to be thoughtful. We think it's very respectful of the city's planning principles. We've had great dialogue with the city, we've had great dialogue with constituents from the neighborhood on this particular point. And we think that our design is is going to result in better architecture, better urban design than something. I I know the left image here would would never happen, and we're not promoting that in any way, shape, or form, but we believe that our kind of ability to tier the buildings up from St. Philip is going to promote a much better design. So we've essentially taken, you know, small portions around the perimeter and in these alleyways and this driveway behind it and the office building, and used a little portion of that kind of in the central site here. Last, Christopher did mention that section, we thought that was helpful. Again, I think it starts to show a little bit of our strategy in the height and using some of that kind of tiered approach to further shield kind of some of the taller elements of this building and moving it more centrally. So with that, I will, I will conclude and certainly open to questions. And I believe a couple of folks are here to speak on the project as well. Thank you for your time, and Scott Parker from Design Works, and I believe. They'd like to add anything, obviously.
Great. Mr. Parker, Mr. Gao, y'all go ahead whenever y'all want.
So this is Scott Parker with Design Works. I think, Ben, you did a really good job emphasizing that our approach is really about the best urban design for the city of Charleston, which translates into the best architecture, which translates into a great addition to this neighborhood. And and every move that we've made has been very deliberate. One thing Ben didn't mention, the parking for the entire project is located in the larger building. And so none of the smaller buildings around the edge, which are allowed to be small because they don't have parking in them, have parking. And and that's really important for the office building. We're able to keep it down to four stories and we're able to have, you know, retail or commercial uses on the ground floor. And what that means is that that building in the middle needs to bump up a little bit to accommodate that parking. So again, it's a strategy that we feel really responds to the site and the neighborhood. And and we hope that you guys on the planning commission will approve us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Does Mr. Gao want to add anything? I see he's listed.
He's one of, he signed up to speak as.
I'm good. I think, I think, I think Mr. Lebatrow and Mr. Parker did a fine job. I'll just sit tight and answer any questions if needed.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Chloe, do we have people to speak that are in favor of this application?
Yes, three people have signed up to speak in favor and one written comment.
You go ahead.
Okay. Andrew, I have given you access to the microphone. Go ahead and unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Gould, you go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you. This is Andrew Gould. I I live in the neighborhood and I serve as the liaison to developers for the Cannonboro-Elliottboro Neighborhood Association. So I've been involved with a number of meetings with the applicant where they have presented this plan to us. And I've been working with the same team for years on the other nearby projects that involve the same owner and design team. So we have a very good relationship with this team at our neighborhood association. And we're very happy with the work they've done in the past. We are very pleased with the quality of Courier Square Phase One. It's markedly better than what other developers have done in terms of large buildings in the area. And this gives me great confidence that when they say that they are asking for more height in some areas in exchange for less height in other areas in order to sculpt an ideal urban form. I I really do believe that that's the reality here because we can see that they have done just that on the other two large projects nearby that were designed by Ramsa. And this is, this is a very good thing because, I mean, anyone would prefer to see a finely sculpted urban form that's good, that's got a real traditional massing to it as opposed to just seeing a great big flat-topped building at six stories, which is honestly what we see from most developers who are building large buildings in the city. So given this good track record and our good working relationship with the applicant, we are very confident in endorsing this height increase. We think they've been very sensitive to the neighborhood in terms of keeping the tall buildings away from St. Philip Street. And and most importantly, that they've agreed to actually line St. Philip Street with a small-scale dwellings that are similar to the structures on the other side of the street. This again is a a degree of deference to the neighborhood that we're not accustomed to seeing from large developments. You know, most developments will put a, you know, a monolithic flat-roofed building right up alongside the neighborhood, even if it's only three or four stories tall. But again, this applicant is going going above and beyond to be respectful to the neighborhood. And I think we're, you know, perfectly happy that, you know, you'll see some taller buildings further back, you know, through the gaps between houses, so that's that's perfectly fine. That's what one expects in a city. So so we we endorse approval of this. I I believe Marion Hawkins is going to be speaking also. He'll talk more about the 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 use issues with the zoning. But I wanted to speak in particular about the the height and the architectural aspect of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Marion Hawkins, is is he on the lines, Chloe?
Yes.
Hey, you go ahead, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chairman and commission members, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I I just want to reiterate how Gray Star and Evening Post Industries has met several times over the last year with adjacent property owners, as well as engaged the whole, the neighborhood to discuss the project and has has partnered with us throughout this, the preliminary requests they're making. Our two biggest concerns with the zoning requests obviously was that the parcels are unique because the parcels are in the are entirely in the S T R overlay and the parcels adjacent to King Street are in accommodations overlay. And our our big, our our major concern was that with the concentration of housing in in this development, it could it could contribute to an even greater concentration of S T R rentals or even a small hotel would be eligible. So and then also with the M U two requested parcel would be in the late-night overlay, which would allow a bar to be open until 2:00 a.m. And as I've emphasized earlier, one of our longstanding livability issues has been the concentration of ours on on Upper King that really negatively affects us at night. And then that always goes into the neighborhood and affects livability issues there. But I'm I'm happy to say that in in response to our concerns, Gray Star and Evening Post has agreed to voluntarily oppose deed restrictions that for one permanently prohibits a business to operate from 12:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. in the M U two parcel and also prohibit S T R and accommodations use for 20 years across all the parcels. And we we greatly appreciate them going to such extent to alleviate our concerns and and to to shut and to really see the vision we have to keep the neighborhood viable. Yet, you know, we do want to, we also, you know, appreciate this this great investment and development, which we think will only add to the vibrancy and and diversity in the neighborhood. This, the president, the the development team presented this whole entire presentation to our Neighborhood Association meeting on January 4th. And after the presentation, we we did vote and it was unanimously approved and supported by the Neighborhood Association. The proposed heights that surround the property, you know, with the two and a half to three and a half, two and a half to three stories along St. Philip's, the the four stories along King, the six stories slightly set back from line and the larger seven portions of the interior of the property, we 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 feel like they are respecting the neighborhood. And and one, one, one quick note, the properties that are adjacent, that are inside this whole block and are are not part of the development, but are existing historic properties or are existing buildings. I believe all those are rentals and the majority of those are are short-term rentals. So there's no residents really that live adjacent to any of these things. Though we have, we have residents along St. Philip, obviously Bogart and and then the top portion of Line Street. And as as Andrew Gould kind of referred to, we, you know, we've seen the the we've experienced with Phase One of Courier Square, the the quality architecture and the sensitivity to 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 good design for the urban core. So we're very hopeful and 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 hope to see the same outcome with this. And we're confident with the same architectural team, Ramsa, as well as Design Works and Gray Star working. So, you know, there are a few additional concerns and details to be resolved, but Gray Star and Evening Post have engaged in Sina, the Cannon, Cannonboro-Elliottboro Neighborhood Association throughout this process and has shown they're committed to work with us to completion. So with all that being said, we recommend the planning commission approve the applicant's request.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Is is Mr. Green with us?
I have not seen him on the list. So, Mr. Green, if you have called in and you're perhaps under a different Zoom name or if you are calling in from telephone, you could please raise your hand. If you are calling in from a telephone to raise your hand, just press star nine. Just give a few seconds here to see if he's on.
And if not, we can go, I know there's a written comment, if not, we can do the written comment, but give him a minute or two, but whatever you want to do, Chloe.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything, so I'll go ahead and read the written comment from Mitch Norville.
Thank you.
This is from Mitch Norville at 677 King Street. I'm the owner and developer of the following project, 677 King Street Office Building and Adjacent Parking Lot and the renovation of four historic structures located at 9092 and 94 Shepherd Street and 285 St. Philip Street. I very much support the rezoning efforts of the Evening Post Industries for items three and four on the agenda. The development of the E P I sites on King Street are critical to the completion of the neighborhood and eventually our success. We need development to continue along King Street to eliminate all the parking lots that discourage pedestrian traffic, to connect the neighborhoods to the north and west, and to connect the new projects on Line Street to the commercial base of King Street. This will reduce traffic as well. I believe that E P I is proposing a solution that works well with the city's vision for the urban core. I also think that what they are proposing works well with what has been underway for 10 years and has been developing around them. This project will continue to balance the live, work, and play opportunities in this neighborhood.
Great. Chloe, and I think we, thank you, Chloe, and I think we have, and that is the people in favor of the application. I think we have some people signed up to speak or opposed to the application. Ms. Drolay, I think is the first one.
Yes. Mr. Lay, your microphone has been enabled.
Thank you, Chloe.
Whenever you're ready, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Cashin Drolay with Historic Charleston Foundation. I'm going to speak first to rezoning request three and then four. With regard to three, Historic Charleston Foundation has had the opportunity to meet with the Courier Square Development Team and review the project proposal prior to them coming to planning commission with the application. And we've been in ongoing discussions with them and are appreciative of the line of communication and ability to weigh in. We believe that M U one W H zoning district is appropriate for the western portion of the property, and we support this use rezoning, given the affordable housing crisis the city faces. We're energized that workforce housing zoning is being pursued. However, we encourage the development team to contribute to the availability of workforce health, workforce housing in a robust and tangible way by actually dedicating residential units in the new buildings to income-qualified individuals rather than choosing the fee and lieu option. With regard to the request for increased height, H C F believes the current allowable height districts are appropriate for this site, and we would oppose rezoning to allow for additional height. For the portion of the site fronting St. Philip Street, where the proposed increase has been made from two and a half to three story, two and a half, three to three and a half stories, where they have stated their intention to request four stories from B A R for architectural merit. We don't think it's appropriate for this historic neighborhood context. The houses in the surrounding neighborhoods, the west along St. Philip and Bogart Streets and along Line Street to the north, they're predominantly two and two-and-a-half-story single houses. There are historic properties located on the Courier Square Phase Two site, and it's particularly important that the height scale be sensitive to these houses. Three of these houses on the property on St. Philip Street are protected by H C F easements or covenants. In order to properly scale the neighborhood, relate to the existing historic homes, we think this section of the property is appropriately zoned, as is. With regard to zoning request four, we've been in discussions with both the Courier Square Development Team and with representatives of the Cannonboro-Elliottboro Neighborhood Association regarding our concerns for M U two W H zoning district along the eastern portion of the property as it would allow for late-night uses in the street-level commercial spaces. We all have a shared concern due to the close proximity of a residential neighborhood to the site and the late-night pressures the neighborhood already feels along King and Spring Streets. And additionally, we have a shared concern for the potential of short-term rentals in these new units. We commend the teams at Gray Star and Evening Post Industries for being forward, restrictive covenants that would preclude late-night operating hours from midnight to 5:00 a.m. and use of the new buildings as short-term rentals. Execution of these covenants would not ultimately occur until further down the road when E P I and Gray Star formally engage in a ground lease, which means that H C F's concerned with the rezoning remains. With the regard, with regard to the request for increased height for the central portion of the the property, again, H C F believes that the current allowable height districts are appropriate for this site. The request is to go from six to seven stories for the central portion of the site. Again, they have a stated intention to request eight stories from B A R for architectural merit. While the property is located within the urban core and within an area of the peninsula deemed to be the spine, the peak of the spine height is actually allocated to the blocks spanning between King and Meeting Streets. The spine should then taper downward in the blocks, downward in height in the blocks to the east and the west because the Courier Square Phase Two site is to the west of King Street, adjacent to the Cannonboro-Elliottboro Neighborhood. H C F believes it is appropriately zoned at its current height district of six stories. And that, it concludes my comments. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, as always, for your comments, Mr. Oley. Do we have Francis Iwaniki, are we not here? Pardon, mispronouncing the name.
You do?
Yes.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir, you go ahead. Thank you. I'm sorry if I butchered your name.
No, 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 that's that's plenty fine. My name's Frank Iwaniki. My wife and I own the properties at 216 and 218 St. My wife and I own the properties at 216 and 218 St. Philip Street, which is immediately to the southwest of the property. First off, I would just like to say, I think it's, um, incredibly commendable of, um, Gray Star and EPI to address some of the neighborhood's concerns with regards to STRs as well as the late-night issue. The, the, as everyone has attested, the pressure on the neighborhood from late-night activities is very intense and, um, really reduces the livability in the neighborhood significantly. Those were some of my initial concerns. My remaining concern really has to do with, uh, the construction during, during the, uh, the process. Both of our, our houses are historic structures. Um, one of the things that I would just like to make mention as a comment is it would be hugely appreciated if during construction that there was a look given to, um, alternate piling methods, either helical piles, maybe vibration piles, um, something besides just, uh, pounding piles. It's a lot to do. We're just really worried about, um, our historic proc, um, properties suffering a lot of damage. And I think obviously as you go up in height from six to seven to now eight stories, the piles go up, um, there's more impact, and we just wish that that is considered as part of the development process. And that's my comments.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Chloe, I believe there's, um, nine written comments. Would you like to read those for the record and for the commission members?
Yes, and then two more people signed up to speak for comment only.
Okay. Do you want to take the ones, you said two more people? I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes, two more people signed up to speak, comment on, comment only. Do you want to hear from them first and then go to written comments?
Yeah, let's go ahead and hear, let's go ahead and hear them first.
Okay. The next is Erin Minigan. Erin, your microphone's been enabled.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, Erin Minigan with the Preservation Society of Charleston. First, we would like to thank the applicant for reaching out to us and walking us through the rezoning requests. This will be a highly impactful project that occupies an important transition site between the King Street corridor and the Cannonboro Elliot Borough Neighborhood, and it will be critical to get this project right. We are hopeful that this applicant and design team can come up with a successful approach to accommodate their programmatic needs and provide meaningful community benefits, and we are encouraged that they have been working with the neighborhood. We are supportive of the neighborhood and feel the group has requested very reasonable and responsible conditions for the project, including the exclusion of short-term rentals, incorporation of workforce housing units, and limitation of late-night hours of operation. We urge the project team to follow through with adopting these thoughtful points put forth by the neighborhood into their program and to continue working with the residents to ensure the compatibility of this project with the surrounding established community. When it comes to the height rezoning requests, we have major concerns with a cart blanche rezoning to seven stories. While we appreciate the applicant being candid with us on their desired goal to eventually request an additional eighth story based, uh, of the Board of Architectural Review based on architectural merit and context, we find it incredibly difficult to reconcile the thought of an eight-story development so close to the historic two-story context of the Cannonboro Elliot Borough Neighborhood. The Preservation Society initially opposed even six stories of height in this area when the height districts were being redrawn, as we have consistently maintained that taller buildings should be limited to the corridor between King and Meeting Streets to prevent adverse impacts on the adjacent two and three-story neighborhoods. Further, City Council recently gave first reading to additional language in Section 54-306 of the zoning ordinance that gives better parameters to evaluate height district rezoning requests, and it now directs the Planning Commission to consider the context of the property, the character of the immediate area, street widths around the property, and whether the requested rezoning will be compatible with surrounding properties. We strongly believe the request to upzone from six to seven stories on the site does not meet the intent of the ordinance and would be detrimental to the character of the adjacent small-scale residential neighborhood. Therefore, we urge you to recommend disapproval of this request. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And we also have, uh, Daniel Atwell, I believe, from Line Street to speak, signed up to speak.
Yes, I'm here. You go. All right, um, I'm the, uh, me and my wife, Amy Atwell, own 238 St. Philip Street, which is, uh, kind of right at the north end of the main parking building and apartment building. And, uh, we're probably roughly 25 to 30 feet away from it. Uh, the original house, 238, is an 1840s historic home. And we recently just built a small house next to it, which is in that green space shown on the, on the diagram. And, um, I'd, I'd really just want to piggyback on, on Frank Iwaniki's comments and, and thank Person Courier and Gray Star for, um, really working with us. And I think it's a great opportunity for, uh, the neighborhood to, to kind of see its full potential, um, finally, uh, out of this vacant land that we've had for so long. I would be completely in favor for it if, uh, we could come to some type of agreement with the development. Again, on the piling, um, I'm, I'm, I have a lot of concern being so close to where piles are going to be driven for approximately two to three months. And if we can come to some agreement that would lead us to a, a quieter way to do it, whether it's helical or vibration or a, any other methods that I don't know about, um, it'd be really appreciated. And, and I, to that point, I wanted to thank, uh, Gray Star for reacting so quickly to the concerns of the STR and the late-night, um, limitations. So I'd, I'd, I'd like to kind of put the, um, construction, the, the pile driving issue kind of in line with, with those issues as well, because I think we run a great risk on these old homes of, of having a lot of foundation damage, settling that might not otherwise occur, um, and then, uh, potential business interruption, um, that will occur on these, on this street for some time. And that's all.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. Um, Chloe, would you now like to read the written comments? I believe there's nine of them.
Yes.
Opposed to the application.
Correct, yes.
Thanks.
First one is from Cindy Wofford at HC Elliott Street. Comment is inappropriate scale for the neighboring residence area. Do not approve the proposed height request. Second is from Patricia Marino at 41 Lemoine Lane. Do not rezon for height and use of buildings in Courier Square. It is best kept as it is for the community and the city. Third is from Matthew Thomas, 99 Multry Street. The proposed height increase for the site is inappropriately scaled to residential neighborhood context. Current height ordinance was thoughtfully and strategically crafted to create a center-height spine between Meeting and King Streets, tapering down to the adjacent residential streets. The developer has requested reclassification from six to seven stories for the central portion of the site between King and St. Philip Streets with a stated intention to request eight stories from BAR for architectural merit. The site is west of the peak of the spine, therefore is appropriately scaled at its current six-story height. The western portion of the site fronting St. Philip Street, the proposed increase from two and a half to three to three and a half stories with the stated intention to request four stories from BAR for architectural merit is not appropriate in scale to the historic properties located around it. Comment number four is from Jane Marvin at 2650 High Hammock Road. The request for height increase and use should not be approved. This is in a residential neighborhood and therefore the reason the planning department has restricted height and use. I request that the developer's requests be turned down. Fifth comment is from Pedro Rivas at 146 Broad Street Apartment B. The property owner of 71A Line Street recommends disapproval of the requested increase in height in the rezoning request. If approved, the developer will be able to locate a seven and potentially eight-story building immediately adjacent to existing two and three-story residential buildings. The additional height request is appropriately scaled to the current residences occupying 10 lots on Line Street. The potential 33% increase in height from six to eight stories may result in a structure that towers a full five stories above the neighboring buildings located on the south side of Line Street. Additionally, the existing historic three-story, single-family residence on the north side of Line Street will be presented with a view of an eight-story building of large mass located approximately only 200 feet away. Century Five Plan recommends maintaining the character of established areas in the city when considering rezoning of property. The proximity of an eight-story building potentially less than 140 feet from the Line Street sidewalk will appear incongruous and dwarf the existing structures. Eight-story building cannot be considered in character or in harmony with the many historic residences located on Line and St. Philip Street. The property owner of 71A Line Street fully supports the incorporation of workforce and high-density units within the development, but believes this goal can be nobly accomplished by the developer using the existing heights and restrictions. Sixth comment is from Pamela Lap at 1905 Edwin's Crossing. I object to the proposed change in zoning and also to the height changes on the buildings. We have ordinances and zones for a reason, and they should not be changed. Comment number seven is from William Shandall at 71 Ash Street. The neighborhood is already being adversely impacted by newer projects with increased elevations when at line near Coming Street several years old now, and most recently by the under-construction building on Shepherd Street. There's also a new hotel at the corner of King and Spring that throws shade onto nearby structures. Continued approvals and construction of higher-height structures continue to erode the cohesive harmony of the Elliot Borough Cannonboro Neighborhood. This continued activity suggests greater value being placed on large projects associated with King Street over the nearby residential neighborhood that has helped create the greater Upper King Street area. Comment number eight is from Laura McLeod, 40112 Oak Drive. Against it, don't allow them to build as it is proposed. And comment number nine from Cater Sparks, I oppose these requests for change in use and additional height.
Thank you, Chloe. Would the applicants, um, like to respond to the concerns, please? And we'll hear from whoever on the application team would like to, uh, respond.
Sure. Um, I'll, I'll certainly reply. Um, we, we definitely appreciate the comments from, um, Preservation, Mr. Iwaniki. Um, and so we have spoken with all of those. It's been, um, a good dialogue, a, uh, one that's been amicable. We probably aren't going to necessarily certainly see eye to eye on the, on the height, um, increase requests. Um, I think that's apparent, but I think that all really is a good, and it starts with the intention of providing great urban architecture and giving up this, like, via the public space, the urban, the urban open space, and really holding down some of the perimeter buildings, you know, was deliberate. But height, we think, is, um, certainly a great in the center of the site. In terms of a couple of the other comments, the construction during, um, the process, I was taking some notes from Mr. Iwaniki and Mr. Atwell. We have met with both. We've talked about, um, in addition to absolutely exploring different construction techniques, that's something that we're already have underway. We're definitely open to that and, um, exploring that further with them, but also, um, providing, um, our direct neighbors with perhaps garden walls and other things that will create the privacy that they desire on their site. So I think we've had good conversations with Mr. Atwell, Mr. Iwaniki, um, as well as the neighborhood, and, um, we, we definitely appreciate their support and are committed to mitigating the construction, um, as best as we possibly can.
Thank you. Would anyone else on your team like to speak in regard to any of the issues raised? Or if not, that's okay too. I just want to make sure I give you all a fair chance to, to respond if you'd like to. No, we're good. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's going to close the public of this out, and, um, we'll now go to, uh, commission members, motions, discussion, questions. The first thing I'd like to say, though, is I, I appreciate the fact that almost everyone that spoke or had, um, even some of the written comments that, uh, the developers in this, uh, met, had a lot of dialogue with the community, which I certainly is foremost in my mind, that there's a lot of communication and, and bring people on board, the shareholders. I appreciate that. Commission members, um, comments, questions, motions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Jacobs, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. Uh, I'm also very excited to see this project come to the table and, um, very pleased to see the developers' interactions with the community and giving a lot of thought and consideration to concerns and trying to work with them. Our main objective here tonight, though, is to consider the zoning of the property and what that means, and to consider a height thing. And so I'm going to move for deferral to both of these, um, agenda items tonight because I'm most concerned about this affordable housing element and the fee and loo concept. I know Gianna Shaw Johnson has recently given an in-depth review of this to council in the committee, um, Community Development Committee meeting. And I believe before we make decisions on very large projects like this that are so critical to this aspect that we should, as a commission, get the benefit of this educational process and review. And so I'm going to move that we defer that just until we hear that information so we can make the best decision for these properties, um, moving forward, because it is very exciting what they're doing. And all the design elements they brought are really at the BAR level, but I'm appreciative of the fact that they included us in that discussion.
And, and just to clarify, your motion is to defer is on both items. Is that correct?
Number three and number four, until, and so we can get this presentation about, um, MU use and workforce housing, um, from Gianna Shaw Johnson, and then we can probably have the best information to make a decision.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Other comments, questions, or second to Ms. Jacobs' motion?
I, I'm, this is Erica Harrison.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Harrison, you go ahead.
I do have a comment. Um, so, first of all, I think, um, I want to, I want to address how I do think that Courier Square, uh, Courier Square, this is, I'm really excited about this project, but more so the fact that Gray Star and EPI have really talked to the neighborhood. You know, it's always good to see folks who stick with the neighborhood, and Marion Hawkins and Andrew Gould, Daniel Atwell, Frank Iwaniki, and you, you heard from some other folks who have done a yeoman's job year over year, almost probably a decade over decade, um, in this neighborhood. And I think, you know, giving some perspective from my own experience, you know, as we all have lived in Charleston, um, this is, I, my office is now at 92 Line Street, which is probably less than a stone's throw away from this location. And what I have, you know, experienced on a day-to-day basis is understanding what it's like to work in Cannonboro and live in the west side. And, um, you see how this neighborhood comes from a place of, yes, we want the best, in term of a product that is respectful towards the neighborhood, um, livability. We want development, um, but we also want to make sure there's housing. We want a ver, a variety of uses. And, um, my understanding is that they have worked extremely hard with, um, uh, Gray Star and, um, uh, EPI to come up with this concept of making sure that there, that there is affordable housing and that in particular, there is, it is de-restricted, which is more than what we could ever do on this property today underneath, um, the ordinance. And, and understanding what Ms. Jacobs' motion is asking is, is potentially, I, I, and I, and I don't think this is, I don't think it would be the intent of the, of the motion, is that it may under, it, is that, this is such a strong commitment on the table. I think we, we need to, to understand and, and see how, and, and see how that bears fruit, in, in light of, of what Ms. Ms. Jacobs is recommending. But more so the fact that But more so the fact that Line Street, you know, is now two ways. You have what you see the heights that is when you actually start at Carolina Street because my house is on Carolina Street, and when you come off Overpass, you're now seeing a different type of height. And so that corridor that they're talking about between King and Meeting no longer actually exists when you're coming off of that over, overpass, off the over, off the Arthur Ravanelle, you're, you're immediately hit with that height change. So I, I think that, that concept of, of saying, you know, we can't have this type of height between King and Meeting, only between King and Meeting no longer, no longer exist. And also, I think by being respectful of what is existing on Line Street in terms of a height is important as well. I, I actually am in favor of this application because it, because they have done a yeoman's job in trying to really be respectful of making sure they're stepping back in their placement of, of, of where they want their, their rezonings and where they want density and where you have various of uses based on time and, and location. So although she, we have the recommendation, I, I would request that we go ahead and move forward with approving this rezoning application. Thank you.
There's been no second on the motion to defer, so unless there is one, you can make a motion to approve the application, and then we can hear from other folks, that's all.
I, I think it might be beneficial to hear from other folks before, you know, if there's, if the motion doesn't
That's fine.
Give a second, I'll make a motion to
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Other comments, questions, concerns?
Still the same, has his hand raised?
Yes, Ms.
Lussain, you go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I just want to really sort of second most everything that Ms. Harrison just said, particularly in regards to the outreach of the development team to the neighborhood and, and, and all the people in this part of the peninsula. It's rare that we get a, an application here that has, even the people who sign up and fall in the opposition camp complimented the team on their outreach and, and really didn't address, you know, these are people who live immediately adjacent to the project, who, who had nothing, you know, detrimental to say about anything other than the construction techniques, which, which the developer has said that they would, that they'd be willing to, to, to continue to discuss with them. You know, for me, I know there's this issue of, of the, of the affordable housing commitment and the fee and lieu, and, and, you know, this development team has been exemplary in working with the neighborhood and with the city. You know, they, they've, they've followed every ordinance that, that this commission recommended to City Council that City Council has passed. And I, and I don't know that it's fair to change the rules on them in the middle of the game. It's, I compare this to the cluster development issue that we just dealt with not long ago where City Council asked the commission to essentially change the ordinance, not consider any more cluster developments while they decided what, what they were going to do to fix the ordinance that they didn't like, that they had, that they had previously passed. And that seems like what they're proposing here with the fee and lieu is that they want to sort of stop this development, even though the developer is, is following the ordinance and has gone through the process in an exemplary manner, but because they want to make a policy change, they're going to stop potentially a project that's moving forward under the current law. I just, I don't like, I don't like that. I didn't like it with the cluster development, and I don't like it here. I am as committed, and I know this commission is and, and City Council, to the expansion of affordable housing. Our, at our last city plan meeting, we heard from the affordable housing consultants about the dire need for housing in, in the peninsula, in the city of Charleston, and we're all committed to that. And I think it's important that we get the, get the rules right to encourage, to encourage that happen, to incentivize it. But don't people, hold people hostage to the unknown. If they're following the current rules, we can't ask any more than that, I think. So I, I actually will take the opportunity to, to offer a motion to approve the, the applications, both rezoning number three and four.
Erica already made that motion.
So there's a motion.
Erica made that motion here.
I believe she said she was
Yeah, well, she, she actually didn't, yeah, she held off on it. So they're really in an official motion. So Mr. Lussain made a motion if Ms. Harrison would like to second it, or
Well, Ms. Brian Jenkins has her Ms. Brian Jenkins has her
Go ahead. Ms. Brian Jenkins, you go, you go ahead, Ms. Brian Jenkins. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to second the motion that Mr. Jake, Mrs. Jacobs made in reference to some more clarity on the zoning and height. While I do respect the outreach that they've made to the community, I do have concerns on the zoning and the height. If, I guess, more clarification of that part can be provided, I would second the motion of Ms. Jacobs.
So let's, so now we have a motion to defer and a second on a motion to defer. That's on the floor, so let's talk about that first. Anybody like to comment on that motion that we're going to be voting on first to defer? You know, I see, I, I would like to, regardless of what we do, I think Ms. Jacobs' comment regarding bringing the folks in from affordable housing with that presentation is a positive one. I do believe that this, and I hear Mr. Lussain, I agree with him, the rules out there are the rules that we need to abide by, but this will have a big impact on us. But other commission members, Ms. Johnson, I know Ms. Lampis is a little bit hoarse or has a laryngitis, but she's always good to hear from. Anyone else like to speak on the, on the motion to defer is what we're discussing right now?
Charlie, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can. So you go ahead.
I understand what Mrs. Jacobs is saying, and I do believe that that we, we need to really look at this affordable housing, workforce housing, and even though we're not trying to change the rules right now, we'd a little bit more about how that's going to work. And so I would go along with Ms. Jacobs' proposal and her motion.
Thank you, Ms. Lampis. Thank you, Ms. Lampis. I know it's, I appreciate your struggle to get the words out. We appreciate your wisdom. But Ms. Johnson or anyone else would like to speak again? We're right now, we're discussing a motion to defer. If there's not, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. The motion is
Mr. Chairman,
Wait, I'm sorry.
If Ms. Jacobs would accept a friendly amendment that, that splits the question of the height change versus the zoning change from G B to M U one or M U two. So that, so the developer can
I think that's a good
on the height change and move forward with their planning while we, while we deal with the
E P I rezoning.
For only the
Christine said you had to run out.
My daughter, her leg, her knee.
I got it. Okay, I was, I was getting an overtalk.
You want to go ahead and
Yes, I will, I will accept. I will accept Mr. Lussain's friendly suggestion to split the zoning because I totally respect the fact that we just can't hold a developer hostage. And this is not about changing the rules in the midfield. I just think the commission needs to hear this evaluation and feel fully informed before they make a decision because I can tell that there's a lot of work being done here. And maybe in this discussion, there'll be even a little bit more work to reassure that some affordable housing will actually be built instead of a fee and lieu, or there'll be some further negotiation. And so I will accept his friendly motion to split the height consideration from the rezoning considerations for number three and number four. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So would your motion, would your motion then be to defer on the, or to approve on the height issues regarding three and four and just defer on the other items of the three and four? Is that correct?
Well, my motion is just, let's just split it out and only talk about deferring
Okay.
the rezoning of, of number three to M U one workforce housing and number four to M U two workforce housing. And just defer those considerations. That's my motion.
Put that out if it's understood. Great. So the motion to defer is only on the rezoning issue of a component of that. Any other comments? If not, we'll take a roll call vote on the motion to defer. Ms. Harrison, did you have something?
Yes, I did. Because I think during the presentation, both in the applicant's presentation and in the comments from the neighborhood, there had already, I, I think the fee and lieu option had been waived because they were engaging in a deed restriction, which is, you know, outside of our purview, but would have restrict, would have forced the issue of requiring affordable housing on-site and building it on-site. If that's not my underst, if that's incorrect, I think I would like some clarity on that.
Mr. Morgan, you want to chime in here?
I'm not sure I completely understand the question. Can you restate that, Ms. Harrison?
My understanding from the applicant, or may, it may have been from Marion Hawkins, is that the applicant had committed to doing a deed restriction, which is separate and apart from the ordinance, that would have indicated, number one, that they would know, they would, they would not engage in any accommodations use or short-term rentals, and that they were, they would not do the fee and lieu, but actually build out the affordable housing.
No, that is not correct.
Okay, okay.
So, but the, what the commitment, as I understand it, to the neighborhood was to not have S T Rs, not have accommodations uses, and not have late night, I, I think after midnight uses is what was
Okay.
Yeah, it, it did not deal with commitment on, on-site or fee and lieu, didn't deal with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Mr. Hawkins might have said that, Mr. Hawkins might have said something about that, but he obviously here and then with the developers or the applicants, so. So we now have a motion to defer regarding the zoning change. And I'd like to go ahead and do a roll call vote if we can. Ms. Brian Jenkins?
I in favor.
Okay. Ms. Harrison?
I in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
I in favor.
Great. Ms. Johnson?
I in favor.
Great. Ms. Lampis?
I in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Lussain?
I in favor.
Great. And I'm in favor of that as well. So that would be seven in favor and, and not opposed to that, deferral of that aspect of it. Is there, Mr. Lussain, would you like to make your motion about the height?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move for approval of the height changes requested in rezonings three and four.
And I'd like to second
Great, thank you, sir. And Ms. Johnson seconds that motion made by Mr. Lussain to approve the height aspect of number three and four. If any comments, if not, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Brian Jenkins?
I in favor.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Harrison?
I in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
I in favor.
Great. Ms. Johnson?
I in favor.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lampis.
I in favor.
I'm sorry to keep making you talk. And, and Mr. Lussain?
I in favor.
Great. And I'm in favor as well, so that's seven in favor and not opposed to that aspect of it. Thank you, Mr. Lussain. I think that was a good idea to split those and, and let's let them move forward with what they need to. I think that's a fair way to resolve this. So that, that should complete item number three and four, and we'll go on to rezoning number five, which is, Mr. Will, y'all let Mr. Bailey know that he can rejoin us and maybe give him a second to come back in? Can they, y'all text him, please? And I'll go ahead and read number five into the agenda, just while we're texting Mr. Bailey. Item number five under rezoning is properties on Maybank Highway, John's Island, T M S number two seven nine zero 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 five six and zero five seven, approximately thirty-seven point two nine acres. Request rezoning of subject properties from single-family residential S R one and S R four to diverse residential D R six. Mr. Morgan, is Mr. Bailey back with us? And if so, we can go ahead and
See Mr. Bailey there? Can you hear us, Mr. Bailey?
Loud and clear.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Great, good to have you back, sir. Mr. Morgan, you go ahead on item number five.
Okay. And we will also have a discussion about zoning for the parcel to the east here as well. And I believe that
Okay, great.
Under zoning three, if you want to focus those, Mr. Chairman.
Number three, yes, sir. So we're gonna, you're gonna discuss rezoning number five as well as zoning number three.
Correct.
Which is, I'll go ahead and read that in the record. I'll go ahead and read that thirty-four eighty-six Maybank Highway, John's Island, T M S two seven zero 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 five five point, excuse me, nine point two six acres, request, request zoning of diverse residential D R six, zone Maybank Highway corridor overlay, District O H M H C in Charleston County. Mr. Morgan, you go ahead.
Okay. So these parcels are on the kind of western, southwesternmost portion of Maybank Highway. They are immediately adjacent to some recent rezonings that you all saw two, three years ago around the Boyd Hayes Road area where we had some commercial out front and D R six to the rear. They back up to S R one parcels here. They are S R four at present, and we'll get into those densities in a minute, and then also S R one. And the request, of course, is six. And then, of course, the zoning would also be to D R six. This would be an annexation from Charleston County in this location. The rounding, we'll go with the Century Five Plan, which shows this as suburban, which is essentially zonings that range from four units an acre to eight units acre. The suburban range on John's Island is along Maybank. It doesn't go further up, like it's not up in the area north of Murraywood. That's more, you know, less than four units acre. But along Maybank, because the elevations are higher, there is more allowance for residential there. That's also in line with the Dutch dialogues that said that on John's Island, Maybank was the more appropriate place for greater densities and mixture of uses, things like that. The county has recently been adopting overlay standards that will be coming to you all soon, sometime this spring, and those also talk about up to eight units an acre in areas like this along Maybank Highway. Here we have aerial of the, all the parcels together, rezoning five and parcel three, rezoning three. Again, this is our John's Island park further to the east. The city's in the process of purchasing through Green Belt Funds land in this area here to the east of the John's Island Park. And then the Hayes Park development is here, and that will be connected all through here. And we'll show you some images in a minute that show how this could connect to Hayes Park. So we're creating a connected system of these neighborhoods that can get you to the park without even having to go to Maybank Highway. So that's, that's one of the objectives with the whole connected road system on John's Island. Here is an image of the property from Maybank Highway. Again, it's a heavily wooded tract. This is property across the street, a church and some other uses across the street. Looking to the east along Maybank, to the southwest along Maybank. And then we have some slides from the applicants. So this is a conceptual site plan. This is not something that you all are approving tonight. This is just to give a This is just to give a sense of what they are working on on the site. Very often, we don't really look at things like this, but I think it's important for you all to understand with the lay of the land and things like that. There is a wetland area in the middle here that would not be developed. There are, would be a series of roads that would connect here, you see, connecting to the north to the Hayes Park development. And there could be connections from the rear here, depending on wetlands and what is on adjacent properties. But the applicants are proposing a rental community that would be, and again, we don't regulate whether they're for sale or for rent, but that is what they are proposing, is a rental community that would be mostly single-family houses with also some townhouses in between. And this is a new phenomenon we're seeing, this is actually the third development on John's Island that would be rental of individual houses. And I apologize for that. Okay. This is a little bit of info that we have from the applicants, and they can speak to this a little bit more as well. But in their neighborhoods, they have traditional neighborhood design principles, they have, the parcel is all owned by one entity, and then the units are rented. These are one and two-story housing concepts with one, two, and three-bedroom homes. And they have private outdoor space, community gardens and parks, and cottages facing a shared green. And they have greater sidewalk connectivity and deemphasized car use, hidden parking areas. And again, the images, there's nothing in the zoning that requires them to build to those images, but this is what they've done in other communities. This is a broader site plan view, it shows Hayes Park to the north, it's already approved, and this is the layout of Hayes Park that is fully approved. And of course, ours, John's Island Park is just in the north right here. But you see the connected system here, and how with other connections to the south or to the rear, if they're allowed via, you know, wetland issues or tree issues, that kind of thing, that you would have a nice connected system. You also see that these groves of grand trees that are here, these are the actual grand trees, would be preserved in this location. So you're getting some of that same effect of Hayes Park, where they preserved a lot of the grand trees across the front of the site. So you get that kind of traditional John's Island look here. And these images do connect, the A image is just the layout, and here again, the zoning doesn't bind them to this layout, but this is what the developers are interested in showing as far as their concept for the site. B is also showing the intersection here and housing. And then D is the Hayes Park development. And these are kind of attached units in a little quad format. It's more than four units, but it's kind of like a squared off area of multiple units. So I think this is a very helpful slide, and it shows you how with SR four, this is from the applicant, you currently have ten point nine units an acre, or a hundred and fifty-six units are currently allowed on the site, plus the SR one, which allows forty-six units, and the county parcel, which would have allowed sixty units. So you're talking about two hundred and sixty-two units allowed under current zoning. With the DR six unit zoning on the site, it would be six units an acre maximum, two hundred and seven units maximum based on the, where the Highland is. And it would be the same zoning designation as the Hayes Park that is adjacent, and also is in reference to the future land use map, the FLM is in line with that in the four to eight units an acre range. So those are the slides from the applicant, and we can go back to those when the applicant speaks. But staff is comfortable with this, given that it meets the objectives of the comprehensive plan, the connectivity principles that they're looking at would be in line with the John's Island plan, and we think could be a good addition to John's Island, and recommend its approval.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. I know we have several presenting, Chloe, is Mr. Van Slambrook going to start with us?
Yes. Can you all hear me okay?
Okay, great, DJ, yeah, DJ Van Slambrook, you go ahead.
I certainly will. Well, I appreciate the time and Christopher takes that presentation. Again, my name is DJ Van Slambrook, and with Middleburg Communities, we are an investment and development company headquartered at Vienna, Virginia, but we have offices in Charleston, Greenville, and Raleigh. I sit in the Charleston office. We are a fully integrated and vertically integrated development company, and that we have, you know, the development team that's on the ground, like myself. We build all of our own projects, and we manage them long-term. As we're long-term holders, typically ten-plus years, even longer. We emphasize that because, you know, when we develop and invest in the communities, we really like to become part of them for the long-term. And that's something that's, that's really important, really important to us. But if we can go back to, or do I have the ability to move through the slides?
Yeah, just. I'm happy to. Slide one. This one?
Christopher did a great job of walking through what we're looking to do. If we can go one down, that'd be great. Yeah, to tell you about what, you know, what we want to do on, on Maybank. I mean, really talk about kind of our community concept, something that we've been working on for, you know, for well over a year now. And it's something that we, you know, we call the handler. And it really is, it's a unique concept, it's something that I think you're gonna, you're gonna see more of. And it's, it's really, it's focused on high-quality design from the architectural side of things, as well as from the planning side of things. Yeah, and really, I think, a unique and great alternative to traditional apartments. These one, two, and three-bedroom cottage homes. The one-bedrooms are duplexes, there's two and three-bedrooms are detached homes. And we will have some, some townhomes as well. But the real emphasis is pulling from that new urbanist, that T and D playbook, and really trying to create, you know, a place that has a sense of place, that is pedestrian-friendly. I mean, we do that in a couple of different ways. Yeah, every home that we have is either fronting, you know, tree-lined street with on-street parking, helping with a traffic calming device, or it is pulled up to these, these green spaces. And these can be activated by just an open space, so these cottages are pulled up close to that. They can have anything from just a fire pit to a community garden. And the idea is really going to bring home and creating a sense of community, rather than having homes in a more sprawl-type pattern that, that are kind of island unto themselves. This is something where we really engage and try to create a sense of community. One thing that I think is great about this design, what drew us here, is that we can actually do that. We can talk about pedestrian-friendly and walkability all we want, but what we love about this site is that integration to the surrounding community, including Hayes Park. So if you can, one slide down, I think that'd be helpful. That was an important part of what we're looking for. Yeah, a couple of the other things that are really important, obviously, is, you know, we have a shared vision of what the city and what the county wants. You know, really studying the comp plans will pull us to this type of area. You know, being in that suburban kind of, and within the future land use map, and being, you know, the suggested four to eight units an acre. And we thought that the six units an acre, which is what we, you know, we strive for, and what our limit is here for that DR six, was really important and fit right within that vision. You know, we combine that with knowing the county's plan for the Maybank corridor, and they seem to have, really have that shared vision for that overlay. These parcels in particular, at least, you know, are within that overlay plan, are limited commercial. So they, they suggest as well a four to eight units an acre. And they actually, you know, suggest that there's not traditional, you know, apartments on those. In fact, they, you know, they suggest that it's, it's duplexes, it's single-family homes, and it's townhouse. So we really like that we're part of that vision, we have that shared vision, which is what pulled us to this site in particular. So it's something that is unique, it's something that we will, you know, own and manage for the long term. And we're really excited, because it just creates, again, you know, a unique alternative to, you know, to rental housing. Yeah, and it creates housing attainability in a context that just really isn't available in the broader market. So we're excited to be here, you know, to present this to you, and hopefully have good feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Van Slambrook. Whoever's next, y'all go ahead from the development team.
Hi, my name's John Dangerfield, with Dangerfield Engineering Survey, working as a civil engineer with DJ on this product. And that's what I think DJ's done a great job explaining it. Just wanted to kind of really go over, just from a design perspective, the thought that they put in towards this product. Been working with them since October, really studying the property and trying to determine what's best for it. Again, just kind of reiterate, not to reiterate what all Christopher and DJ have said, but if you look at the property itself, there's a central wetland corridor. There's one upland, there's actually two upland crossings through this property. So what we're doing is we're actually utilizing the upland crossings to cross the property so they can preserve the wetlands. There's also been concerns about the stormwater. The stormwater is currently in the special protection area, we're aware of that. We've been working with Kenzie Holton through this schematic design so that we could address the, the stormwater concerns. These are larger detention ponds than what you usually see in order to address that and mitigate for that, that stormwater requirement. So there's also been concerns about the traffic impact study. We are in the process of getting Beal Engineering, who is doing, who's completing the traffic impact study for Hayes Park. She's currently in the process of completing the traffic impact study here. And if there's any recommendations for improvements along Maybank Highway, the Middleburg team's committed to, to addressing those concerns. And also, just to point out, DJ and those guys have taken a lot of effort to reach out to the neighborhood community. I think they sent four hundred eighty-nine letters out to adjacent neighbors. We had a neighborhood community, and it was a little bit unique now with the COVID and what's going on. But they had a neighborhood community meeting on Monday night. I think there were around fifteen participants at that meeting, and we did the best we could to address any concerns they had. I think some of the concerns were the, the traffic. Again, we're doing traffic impact study. They had some concerns whether we're preserving the wetlands, we are. Again, this is, they had, you know, also had, just wanted to know what the product was, and DJ and those guys did the best they could to appease those and address those questions. So I just wanted to kind of point out the effort that they have gone through to, to address the community and try to reach out to them. And I'm here if y'all have any concerns about the design from a more technical aspect. But I do know that this is, you know, this technically four-y zoning, and that the zoning, I think one of the things I'd like to point out is that under the proposed DR six zoning, there's only thirty-five acres of upland. That will only allow, if you go to thirty-five acres or sixteen units per acre, that's a maximum of two hundred and ten units. With the upland areas, the upland areas may not match exactly what we finally have, but I was doing the final counts based off our existing survey, and I came up with two hundred and sixty units that under current zoning would allow for single-family residential. So again, I think that's a critical aspect, just looking at it strictly from a zoning aspect. But again, if there's any other questions that myself or DJ can answer, we'll be more than happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Dangerfield. Now maybe something you want to respond to after we hear the concerns opposed. Is Mr. Kimzie or Mr. Feister, Feister want to speak?
This is Jason Fister, I'm the Vice President and Land Entitlements at Middleburg. No problem, it's certainly not the first time that, that mistake has been made. Yeah, I just wanted to comment a little bit, John, like I said, I've kind of been spearheading the, the neighborhood response, and I've had very good discussions with folks that either couldn't make the Zoom meeting we had on Monday night, but they did get the letters, most of which are really, I would say, clarification questions about kind of exactly where the interaction with Hayes Park is, and how far back the site goes, and really a lot of concerns about whether or not we were going to connect to Southwick Drive in the back, and clarified that that we're not. But I would say our discussions have gone very well with the neighbors, and we're excited about the project.
Thank you, sir. How about Mr. Kimzie? Is he going to speak, Reese Kimzie?
Yes, you've got me here as well. The only thing I wanted to mention, to bring up here is obviously with the Maybank corridor, with the current overlays that are going through with Charleston County, and also City of Charleston, also following them in suit. I think this is, you know, staying within those same parameters of densities and kind of layouts, and what those are, are looking to do in this area. And, you know, obviously working close with New Leaf on their Hayes Park development tying in, I think that's, that's key for this project. But that's all I really wanted to add, I think everybody else covered the other points. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all, thank all of y'all. I don't think, Chloe, there's anyone signed up, any written or verbal to speak in favor, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll go, there's one person I think signed up to speak in opposition, then thirty-five comments. So we'll go ahead and, and then the, Ms. Karen Buckley, is she available?
Hi, yes, I am. Hi, yes.
Thank you, ma'am, you go ahead.
Um, I just, I'm a resident on Southwick, and, I mean, I understand the Maybank, yes, and the traffic the way it is. My very big concern is the not, you know, they're saying they're not going to go connect to, to Southwick, but saying it and doing it are two different things, that's why we have these meetings. And I would just, I mean, if they're saying it, I would like them to put it in writing that they weren't going to connect. It's a big impact. Southwick, as you know, is the cut-through road between Brownswood and Maybank as it is. And we've lived here a little over a year, and we've already had four vehicles in our ditches and three near misses. I mean, that's one year. It's supposed to be a thirty-five mile an hour zone, and it is not. And, I mean, just the impact of the one year, if you add all this traffic from this proposed neighborhood, it, you know, I won't be able to get out of my driveway. So I, I just want to see more detailed information about saying what they're going to do and doing what they say they're not going to do.
Great, thank you, Ms. Buckley, and we'll ask them to respond to that after we hear some, some written comments, but thank you for your comments as well. Chloe, do you want to go ahead and start reading the opposed to this, the written comments?
Yes. Okay, first is from Amy Strohacker, fifteen sixty-three Castlewick Avenue. My husband Randy Crabbe and I purchased our home approximately sixteen years ago on Castlewick Avenue, John's Island. We like so many of our neighbors, but not only our initial investment into our home, but a great deal of time, energy, and tens of thousands of dollars in order to make it our forever home. We and our neighbors purchased our house, houses in Finwick Hills because the neighborhood was quiet, peaceful, and small. Since that time, the beautiful woods behind our home have been raised in the name of progress and replaced with ugly cookie cutter homes which now look over our backyard. Now yet another developer wants to destroy the precious forest on Southwick Avenue to install apartments. The people of Finwick Hills brought their homes to establish a permanent residence in rural John's Island, not to be inundated with a flood of buildings, too many people, and more development that our island can handle. Have you any idea how ridiculous the traffic has already become on John's Island? The developers of the neighborhood behind us promised they would provide many outlets out of their neighborhood. Those promises turned out to be lies. The residents of the new neighborhood drive through our neighborhood twenty-four hours a day, particularly down my road, Castlewick Avenue. They speed and have no regard for our safety. They cause traffic congestion already, and adding hundreds of apartments to our already overcrowded island would be far too much for this area. Our property values would plummet with apartments so close to our neighborhood, and crime would likely rise in the area. Finwick Hill would lose what took so long to build the quiet, friendly neighborhood we all invested our blood, sweat, and tears in. Another consideration is the wildlife in the area. We had an abundance of deer, birds, raccoons, possum, and other wildlife that seemed to disappear but for a few years after the neighborhood behind us was built, but it seems to be slowly recovering. Why would anyone wish to disturb our ecosystem that way again? I can finally hear tree frogs singing at night again. Please don't destroy their homes in the name of progress. Not only this, but apartments would only serve to make John's Island flooding even worse. South, Southwick Avenue floods whenever we get a great deal of rain, and this problem will only multiply with the loss of trees and shrubs in the forest. It's time for developers to stop their takeover of our residential areas and beautiful green spaces in John's Island. We strongly oppose the building of apartments in our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration. Second comment is from Emily Jenkins, fifteen fifty-two Castlewick Avenue. I'm writing to oppose the rezoning of the wooded area off Maybank Highway to DR six. As a property owner in the area, I'm concerned that this will exacerbate the known issues of flooding and traffic in the area. While I'm not opposed to this property owner's rights to use the property as desired, the county has not done a great job of protecting John's Island from the consequences of improper development. We in the Finwick Hills community already experienced serious ingress egress issues from both Maybank Highway and Brownswood's Road. Unless the commission is committed to requiring a light or new connection for the proposed development, which is outside of the current and proposed Maybank Highway overlay, I urge you to reject this zoning change. Neither Southwick nor Maybank Highway have the capacity in this area to support the increase from single-family homes to DR six. Next is from Susan Montgomery, seventy, seventeen sixty-six Southwick Drive. Susan is opposed to the rezoning and zoning of the three parcels along Maybank Highway due to concerns about future flooding and street connections with Southwick, and believes that the allowable density, the current allowable density should not be increased. Fourth is from Amanda Davis. I'm opposed to the request by the developer at Middleburg Communities to rezon this wooded property to DR six. That's what allowing more apartments, this is a bad idea. There is no infrastructure to support this type of development. This will cause more traffic on Maybank Highway, which we all know is grossly over capacity. Will add more congestion to our only two exits off the island. It will also cause a lot more traffic driving through quiet neighborhood roads, as well as adding to the flooding problem. Next from Angie McGuire. In regards to rezoning Finwick Hills. In regards to rezoning Finwick Hills to allow apartments, I live in Finwick Hills. Please do not allow this. Currently, we already have with flooding issues due to Finnick Woods and all the other new houses that were recently built. Also, it currently takes a very long time to take a left onto Maybank from Southwick due to the increased traffic. This would make a traffic light there almost necessary or some other change to that interest of the subdivision. Southwick is a cut-through from Brownswood, so we have more than just Finwick Hills and Finwick Woods traffic. This will also add a lot more cars to the only two exits off the island. Currently, the one lane leaving off Maybank gets so backed up in the morning, you can sit through multiple light changes before ever reaching the light. There are no sidewalks currently in the neighborhood, which has a lot of foot traffic. So adding apartments would increase the danger to the people walking their dogs, riding bikes, jogging, et cetera, in the neighborhood. Please don't let this pass. Next is from Brooke D. Wood, twenty eighty-six Shell Island Trace. I'm writing to voice my vehement opposition of this proposed change as a property owner. On Johns Island, very close to this property, I can attest the negative impact development of additional apartments would have on our already overburdened roads, other infrastructure, flooding properties, failing and near-failing schools and insufficient police presence on the island. Johns Island is not yet prepared for the density and population already allowed with current zoning. Increasing density through zoning changes should be rejected without hesitation. Rather than spending any more time debating the merits and disadvantages of increasing density through zoning changes, I would argue that a moratorium on any zoning changes should be established for the foreseeable future. So the county and city have had adequate time and allocated necessary personnel, monetary resources to address unsafe road conditions, traffic backup, subpar schools and new and increased flooding. For this would be a good time to reevaluate the money the city and county seem to spend in establishing development entrances, increased traffic signals and other necessary accommodations for developments without expense to the developer. Charleston County has recently rejected a major zoning zoning overhaul that would increase density both within and outside of the urban growth boundary. City of Charleston must take similar action if Johns Island is to have any hope of protecting its barrier island, semi-rural and rural environments. Thank you for your time and considering my position. Next is from Kara Scott. I've recently learned about the planned apartment building development thirty-four ninety-two Maybank Highway and as someone who lives in the Finwick Hills subdivision directly behind the plot of land, I'm asking for the plan to be reconsidered. The traffic on that part of Maybank Highway is already difficult to navigate around rush hour times and in hundreds more cars is asking for accidents, longer commute times and frustration. Does the developer have plans to pay for a traffic light at the intersection of Baymake and Southwick? That section of land is also rather swampy and floods frequently. By developing there, the runoff water will be pushed into our neighborhood, flooding our homes instead. Does the developer have a plan in place for monetary compensation for people whose homes are damaged by their need to make as much money as possible? I've spent some time at the Shade Tree Apartments further down Maybank Highway when a friend lived there. The constant cigarette smoke, littering, dog poop everywhere, police called it all times of day and night, people growling in the parking lot. I bought in this neighborhood because I didn't want to live anywhere near any of that and now city council is trying to bring that to my front yard. That's not a city council that is listening to its constituents. That's not a city council that cares about the citizens of Charleston. People live on Johns Island because they don't want to live in Mount Pleasant or West Ashley or James Island or any of the other numerous places that have been destroyed by overdevelopment. People live on Johns Island for the natural beauty and the peace and quiet. Finwick Hills is a quiet family neighborhood and adding an apartment complex with tons of traffic and noise will ruin property values and quality of life. We'll certainly be selling our home before that happens. Maybe y'all can purchase our home, tear the house down and build an apartment complex there too, since that's what council seems to want to turn Charleston into. I apologize if my tone comes off snarkier disrespectful, but we just bought our home here in August twenty twenty and will be losing a ton of money if we have to sell the next couple of years. Proving this development is putting the developers' wallets over those of Charleston citizens, the people you are elected to represent. We are just an average couple who is getting married this month. We have a cat and dog and hope to start a family in the coming years. Won't be able to do so in this neighborhood or in this home that we love so much. If this development goes forward, we'll probably leave Charleston altogether at that point. I'm I'm worried many others will too. Then what will this city become? Thank you for your consideration. Next is from Carly Greeley.
I'd be glad to take.
I'm doing all right, Charlie, but I'll let you know if I, I'll let you know if I need to tag out. All right. Next is from Carly Greeley. I'm a resident of Johns Island and live in the neighborhood of Southwick. I'm against building anything other than single-family homes behind the Habitat Store. Apartments will add a tremendous amount of traffic backing up Southwick as there's only a stop sign. It's already difficult turning left onto Maybank from Southwick. Apartments will only decrease the value of homes here. Do not build apartments on Southwick. From Carmen Diaz at twenty-one ten Shell Island Trace. As a resident and property owner in Johns Island since two thousand and five, I'm writing to strongly oppose the zoning changes proposed by developer Middleburg Communities. I've watched Johns Island's quality of life steadily decline in the sixteen years since buying my property, five point oh one acres and then building my home on it. This island was once a respite from the overbuilding and other areas of Charleston. Our roads are overburdened. Flooding has become an every-rein occurrence instead of only once in a while occurrence. The schools are an embarrassment. The police presence is inadequate. Until the city and county can fix the already existing problems, there should not only be no increase in density, there should be zero new development. Moratorium on building is long overdue. We do not need or want high-density housing on this island at all. Whether we are talking about cheap apartments or luxury condominiums, it has no place on Johns Island. Shame on the city and county for already overbuild, overburdening what was once a beautiful and peaceful island. Charleston County recently rejected a major zoning density increase. They listened to its citizens. I beg the city to do the same. The city's first responsibility is to the citizens already living here, not to some developers, regardless of how well-connected they may or may not be. Please don't let the almighty dollar destroy Johns Island. I say no to the zoning change proposal. Thank you for your considerations matter. Next is from Cassia Royo. I was just notified that a developer is trying to get the wooded property behind Habitat Store on Johns Island rezoned to a DR six that would allow apartments. I'm not sure if you care or not, but this would be an absolute disaster for Johns Island. There are already too many apartment complexes on Johns Island and they are not even at max capacity. We bought a house on Johns Island because it wasn't like West Ashley or James Island and it is turning into that for the almighty dollar. Would be nice if someone actually cared about the residents and not just the money. Also, the property behind there is saturated with water that runs through them and that is no place to build another complex. Why can't everyone just be happy with some nature instead of killing everything around here? Personally live on Southwick Drive and it is becoming a speedway for the local traffic. If you actually care about the citizens of Johns Island, there will be a stop to this immediately. From Courtney Morris West. Middleburg Communities is attempting to rezone the wooded property behind the Johns Island Habitat for Humanity to DR six, which would allow apartments. Taxpayers' money is being used at this time to address the current traffic issues that are plagued on the island due to the abundance of development. Give us a break and let our traffic arteries catch up. From Daniel Carrier, fifteen seventy-four Brunswick Drive. I've been made aware that Middleburg Communities is trying to rezone and develop the large tract of land adjacent to my property. I'm concerned that such development would require regrading and filling of the swamp area back there, reducing our neighborhood's ability to properly drain water despite us being on higher land. We are already experiencing water retention in our drainage longer than necessary and other parts of our neighborhood that used to not flood have started to as a result of increased development resulting in septic issues and neighbors leaving our community as a result. I ask that you stop this rezoning from happening and only consider single-family residential or small-scale commercial on this property to minimize the risk of flooding and increase traffic in our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. From Danielle Wolk. I understand the above TMS numbers are under consideration to be zoned for apartments. Considering the number of traffic accidents on Johns Island, I would think it better for the community if this is not allowed. From Donna Boick, stay in the downtown Charleston. We want no more apartments on Johns Island. We are an island. Stop sinking us. From Jacob Wood. As a full-time resident of Johns Island who lives in the immediate vicinity of the Habitat Store on Maybank Highway, I must voice my opposition to this or any additional development along the Maybank Corridor until the infrastructure improvement plans catch up with the construction ambitions of our local and non-local community of residential developers. Traffic congestion along the Maybank Corridor has already reached an untenable state with gridlocked traffic stretching the full length of the highway from River Road all the way to the main Bohica intersection at most typical working days. Add a traffic incident, police stop, car accident, et cetera, or weather event and the pain for the local community is dramatically compounded. I acknowledge that the seller's market is very attractive for many of the large landowners on our island and that selling tracts of idle land to high-density investor builders is certainly their right if the land is zoned appropriately. That said, those of us who still choose to make their homes on Johns Island must insist that those who come here to only make a profit do not diminish our island, but help to accelerate the necessary improvements that the homes is so desperately desperately want to construct will require. Without this, we will just be another Mount Pleasant and all the poorer for it. From James Bishop, twenty-six sixty-eight Starfish Drive. It's come to my attention that the area behind Habitat for Humanity on Maybank Highway and Johns Island is to be rezoned to allow high-density dwellings. The lack of a master plan for development on Johns Island is killing the environment with piecemeal and half-assed redevelopment. Forested areas are being cleared of every stick of vegetation and replaced with single-unit housing constructed in eve-to-eve densities. The rural atmosphere that wants to find the island and appeal to those who enjoy privacy and solitude is deteriorating daily. This latest threat of high-density housing will only increase the already stressed highway system and encourage more support development such as facilities for water treatment, power supply, education, healthcare, et cetera. To my knowledge, there are no plans for community gardens, parks or recreational facilities. Encourage the county administration to plan ahead and avoid creating a community where roads must be widened, power lines upgraded, sewage works expanded, et cetera, to accommodate the increasing population. Service facilities never catch up with the demand, so it is wise to avoid the demand. In short, I'm absolutely against rezoning any property on Johns Island to encourage high-density development. I'm also against clearing all the trees to allow developers to cram houses close enough so that neighborhoods, neighbors can shake hands out their adjacent windows. From Carrie Sturm. As a Johns Island resident, I am vehemently opposed to changing the zoning, the TMS numbers to DR six to allow apartments. I can barely turn out of my neighborhood onto Maybank Highway half the time now. This development would use the same crossroads to access Maybank. Thank you for considering the citizens of Johns Island. From Linda Dish. I am totally against the rezoning of Finwick Hills to allow for apartments. Johns Island is congested enough. From Linda Dreese Zen. I oppose the rezoning of this area and the building of apartments on it. Johns Island cannot handle any more construction. It is ruining this beautiful place. The roads with just one lane in either direction cannot take more traffic. It is a nightmare now and not just during rush hour. Widening the roads would remove more of the beautiful live oaks, taking down all the trees, increases the possibility of flooding, already a problem in some places. Because there's no public transportation here, the addition of apartments rather than houses is a greater problem. More people and more vehicles will be on the roads. Please consider the current Johns Island residents before adding more. From Linda Espocito at eleven thirty, Santa Ina Way. As a resident of Johns Island, I implore you to refuse the request for additional residential building on the island, specifically this above petition of Maine and Maybank. The island is overcrowded with the horrific traffic problem as it is. In the event of a natural catastrophe, the infrastructure will not allow the many residents to drive to safety. The roads and two bridges are constantly congested now. The crime rate has exploded. The flooding issue has not been addressed. What was a country paradise has been ruined. No more. From Lynn Ross. I just saw my next-door post about a developer wanting to build behind the Habitat Retail Store. I live in the Finwick Woods subdivision. My backyard faces Southwick and it's right across from that property. We face lovely trees and it's very quiet and all the homes were built because of that reason. Our area is being built up everywhere you look. One Brownswood Road, new subdivisions have been popping up. This area cannot support more housing. The development will cause more flooding. We already have huge traffic problems with all new construction and we cannot handle anymore. Right across Maybank and Southwick, they are building what seems to be some retail, but not sure it could be housing. This apartment housing cannot be built. From Mary Bennett. I'm opposed to the construction of any additional homes or apartments on Johns Island until the traffic and flooding issues are addressed, addressed and corrected. Building these apartments will increase the congestion, traffic issues on Maybank Highway, which have not been resolved and increase the flooding issues on the island. We need less construction and more green space to absorb the rainfall. Drive through the neighborhoods and see the standing water on the roadways because it is, it has not where to go. From Rebecca Rediger. Concerning rezoning of Finwick Hills to allow apartments by Middleburg Communities. As a resident and homeowner on Johns Island, there needs to be a stop put to the continued development and destruction of the natural lands. This is a barrier island and density is not our friend. I'm not against responsible development. Of course, people will move to Johns Island and build houses, but there must be responsible legislation put in place to address flooding issues, density, traffic concerns, lack of utilities and public services, protection of the natural environment. Building thus far has been completely irresponsible. There needs to be less density and tax breaks for incorporating environmentally friendly building practices. The fact is, not everyone can live here. Building more houses, apartments does not make things better. We are not solving any problems by doing this, just making more. Johns Islanders will not allow the Sea Island to become like Daniel Island. We will not allow the destruction of our rural areas and agriculture. It will be duly noted which councilman, council members vote for our destruction versus our preservation and the people will vote accordingly. Vote like you have a conscience. From Rhonda Shidback. Maybank Highway is so congested and you want to put apartments in this area. I live in the Finwick Hill area and do not want this to happen. Not only will Maybank not be able to handle the traffic, but either will Southwick. This is a no flood zone and by building this spot, I'm afraid this will change. Please stop and listen to the residents. From Wick Widdelski at twenty-nine eighty-four Pickling Hill Road. As a longtime resident of Johns Island, I continue to see unprecedented growth and development over the last several years, which I understand is all a part of progress. However, is much progress towards the tax base of the community that has been made, I've seen very little towards the infrastructure to support that growth. It is blatantly apparent that the present road infrastructure, among other things, unable to support this continued growth without some forward planning and present action to maintain an equitable quality of living in the area. I asked then what is being done towards that end? Or are we going to continue to see this growth while at the same time see inaction from the planning side of the government to accommodate the growth? The minimal widening widening projects of the main arteries on Maybank Road on the island are insufficient. There really needs to be some type of equitable investment in expanding the infrastructure that serves Johns Island, an infrastructure that gives the area access to and from the island. Additionally, what studies have been done to evaluate the impact, the wet areas that are being filled in and removed? The flooding is increasing as the water appears to have nowhere to go and disperse. Being the stewards of the community, I would hope these decisions are based on some evaluation of all these areas, vice rubber stamping changes that just increase a tax base and fulfill short-term investment. I am against this change in zoning until such time as the area infrastructure is brought up to some minimal state of being able to handle the increase in traffic and population growth. From RJ Swist. Please do not allow Middleburg Communities change the zoning for a piece of wooded property on Southwick and Maybank on Johns Island. Allowing this development to go in is a horrible idea and will only cause more stress and traffic on our island. Development is already out of control and no one is stopping it. Please stop this. From Rob Sturm. As a Johns Island resident, I am vehemently opposed to changing the zoning to DR six to allow apartments. I can barely turn out my neighborhood onto Maybank halfway, half the time now. This development would use the same crossroads to access Maybank. Thank you for your considering citizens of Johns Island. From Sarah Snidacker, thirty-four fifty-one Cynthia Drive. The resident of Johns Island who lives near the proposed rezoning asks you to not rezone the property. Traffic is a huge issue already throughout the island, particularly on Maybank. This development also contributes to the growing problem of flooding. Please listen to your residents when we say enough is enough to the unbridled development on Johns Island. From Steve Green, twenty-one fifty-six River Road. There's a developer that is trying to get the wooded property behind the Habitat Store rezoned to DR six that would allow apartments. This is a bad idea. Try to imagine how this will affect the people of Johns Island if they build apartment buildings there. This will not only cause more traffic on Maybank and our two exits off the island, but it will also cause a lot more traffic driving through our park neighborhood roads as well as possibly adding to the flooding problem with fill-in build. I'm a forty-year resident of Johns Island. Please do not change the zoning of this property. From Steve Kitchen, Finwick Woods. Please tell me that you won't be approving an apartment complex in the land just north of the restore facility. Maybank Highway is about to collapse as it is. From Susan Reynolds at fifty-twenty Coral Reef Drive. I live in the villages in Saint John's Woods across Maybank Highway from this proposed development. I'm opposed to approving this building permit. There's already too much development on Johns Island without any consideration of the traffic or drainage problems that result. Oh, and continued, please help us retain the rural character of Johns Island. We don't want Johns Island to become another Mount Pleasant. From Suzanne Bostic Olvera. There's a developer that has requested a zoning change for a property on Johns Island off of Maybank Highway from SR one and SR four to DR six and the property owners of Johns Island are not happy about this. Johns Island is currently going through a massive growth spurt and the residents are suffering from this. We do not currently have adequate roads or infrastructure to to support all of this incredibly overdevelopment that is going on. And we really don't understand why the city of Charleston keeps approving project after project with no apparent plan to reserve a good quality of life for the residents. I personally moved to Johns Island in search of a nice rural area to raise my son and that is exactly what it was seventeen years ago. But now it is becoming just as congested and miserable as James Island became after the city gobbled it up and crammed as much development that would possibly fit. This developer has told the residents surrounding this property that he does not have plans to build on the entire wooded lot due to wetlands that cover part of it. But if you reason the property, I'm sure they will continue to build on every possible available land that is there, whether it is wetlands that will be filled up or not. That will only cause problems for the surrounding neighborhoods. We've also heard that this developer has a reputation of letting their rental property get run down and that will not help Johns Island at all. Please do not approve this rezoning request. Single-family homes on this land is all we can handle, if even that. From Timothy, Timothy Koolen. My na- my name is Timothy Koolen. My wife and I live on the corner of Castlewick and Southwick. Since the building of the neighborhood off Killer Fish, our well has run dry. We routinely flood on heavy rains, something this property has never done since nineteen fifty-nine and have seen both a meteoric rise and accidents caused by wildlife, loss of habitat and pets, even those on leashes, including one of ours being run down by the influx of heavy traffic, especially with no infrastructure to accommodate the number of new vehicles. The drainage situation is even more dire. We have two culverts as we live on a cor- corner lot which drain into the woods in question and their neighboring land and which in the past five or six years only have almost never been dry, instead retaining several inches of water almost constantly. The loss of property value, the worsening drainage issues, the heavily increased traffic flow with no plan to fix the numerous potholes we are now seeing nor to safely accommodate said traffic through our neighborhood, the number of accidents in this neighborhood has skyrocketed. We see more than one wreck a month now in our own front yard, ninety-five percent of whom are inebriated. This apartment complex will surely make some folks some money, but the long-term issues it will cause for the residents who depend on the drainage, who live on the small neighborhood streets, which will, which will now see even more traffic flow and whose properties will certainly devalue with the addition of these apartments deserve our say. We wholeheartedly vote no on this land being raised for new apartment buildings. This island will not recover as is from fill-in builds. We need the drainage or a city-county wide sewer system installed, not We need the drainage or a city county wide sewer system installed not to keep adding on to the problem. And finally, from Trace Moser at thirteen thirty eight Whifferwell Farm Road. My family has lived on Johns Island for twenty two years and traveled several miles on Maybank Highway to get to the Stono River Bridge. The development of the last several years that feeds more and more cars onto Maybank, Maybank keeps backing us up further and further to wait in line to leave the island. Please do not allow the Middleburg community's developer to build apartments and homes on the tract of land at thirty four ninety two Maybank Highway. Thank you for your attention and help in this matter.
Well, Chloe, I can say this, you passed your reading test very well, so I appreciate that. And um, it's important to point out that we read all of these entirely because when we're meeting um in person, we have comments and normally, normally we wouldn't limit people, uh, sometimes we would. But it's important, your, your input's important, so all of this is being read for, so it's for the record. That being said, um, there were a lot of comments and concerns. Mr. Vance Slambrook, um, we want to give you and your team an opportunity to address uh, any issue you'd like to raise that was brought up.
Yeah, absolutely. And I couldn't agree more that those, those comments are critically important. Um, is it a lot, a lot to digest, but I'll tackle them, couple of them as I can. Um, and then, you know, let John, the rest of my team weigh in. Um, one, I think kind of hitting on the, of the apartments, you know, our plan as discussed is to be predominantly these detached, um, single family homes. Um, one of the others, yeah, the idea of the density, um, while we are going to DR six, I, I think, you know, one of the slides that we put together is important to note and that, you know, if allowed under the current um, density and the current zoning, it actually allows for, for more density. And I think that has a direct correlation to um, to traffic as well. And we've, as doing these, these become newer as they are, you know, rental homes and that's what they're done specifically. Um, yeah, we have empirical data that these generate much less traffic um, than your traditional single family um, home. We've done a bunch of studies, we've been, you know, making that argument. It's something that we found across the board as we studied these um, throughout the United States. Um, yeah, and one thing I'll touch on is just the, talking about the grain trees and the importance of the environment. I completely agree with um, with concerns of that being infill, which is, will not happen, especially after the conversations we're having with, with Kenzie Holton. But we, you know, we've done a full tree survey um, on this site, certified arborist. We actually plan um, on walking it with Eric Schultz on Friday. Um, so yeah, Brock will be doing anything outside of the purview or, you know, the, the side of the city there. And then, you know, there's one comment about, you know, some about us, our communities allowing them to be run down. Um, I, I don't know where that, where that's coming from. The, the only community that we have right now that's fully developed in Charleston, I was actually in the North Charleston market and yeah, one community of the year for three years in a row. So we really do take pride in what we do. We are long term holders. That is something that, you know, allows us to put more upfront into these, um, these properties and communities. Um, because we intend to hold them for ten to fifteen years. So it's kind of a high level um, look at, at those comments. Um, but I, but I certainly appreciate them because, you know, I live not too far from here and, and I, I certainly understands people's concerns.
Yeah, DJ, you did a great job on touching on the density. Um, also I think one of the big reoccurring themes that we heard that they're, they're reading the letters that Chloe read was the stormwater. The city of Charleston did adopt new stormwater regulations July first of this year. And in that they have, you know, identified special protection areas. This was not a special protection area. They have identified this as a special protection area. With that, you have more stringent requirements. Actually, once this is developed, less stormwater will be coming off of this site than it does under the current state. It's not matching what existing conditions is actually will and be improving the condition of it. Um, there's also, you know, there's concerns about the filling of wetlands. Under these special protection areas, if you fill anything within that stormwater, does that stormwater shed? You have to offset that volume. So from a feasibility standpoint, one could not do that. Um, we are not going to be filling the wetlands with the wetlands have been, this wetland delineation has already been certified by an Army Corps of Engineer. Um, we're actually going through an upland corridor just because of the way that, that corridor works. We may offset it during a, a small minor fill process, but as far as filling a, a large watershed under the special protection areas, I don't see how that would be feasible, because anything that you fill, you have to offset that volume requirement. Um, and I think that's why you see the significance of blue area on this overall map is because really, in our opinion, you're almost doubling the size of detention under, under conventional detention requirements with the special protection areas. So I think that the stormwater require, there's a lot of the stormwater questions are being addressed through the SBA guidelines, which were adopted under the new uh, stormwater um, guidelines in July first. And then the wetlands, I think, are, are also being addressed through that. Traffic, again, we're using a deal engineering. We're going to be implementing any type of traffic that's necessary. The connection over to Fenwick, I don't see how that's possible due to the wetlands that are between us and um, Southwick Drive. I'm not saying that the city of Charleston may require us to do future connectivity, but we have no plans and I think DJ would be willing to, to agree with that. Um, so that, again, you know, that's what we're trying to highlight on the traffic. The density and stormwater are reoccurring things. Density wise, again, this, the proposed zoning will allow less units than what will, would be allowed under current zoning. Um, so with that, I hope I ask any, answer any of y'all's questions if y'all have any, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Hey, thank you for y'all's responses. Anything else you'd like to add? Otherwise, we will close out the public aspect of this. If not, uh, thank you, uh, for your responses and I appreciate that. That'll close the public aspect of um, of item um, under uh, rezoning number five as well as uh, zoning number three. Uh, commission members, questions, comments or motions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Jacobs, you go ahead.
Thank you, and I'm glad that we were able to listen to all the comments because there were a lot of concerns. And I'm glad that the applicant was given the time to respond to those comments. I can tell that they spent a lot of time reaching out to the community and educating themselves and addressing things appropriately. If you could put up the slide that shows the current zoning and new zoning and density for, for a minute. I think it's important because I'm going to repeat this again, just because the community was very strong in saying, don't allow for apartments in high density. They're actually almost down zoning their property somewhat as far as density. If, and I'm sitting here with the table that was included in our application and looking at what is currently zoned there. And the maximum percent of lot occupied by the buildings will not change at all by the zoning. Um, the height will change only for one lot, but not the other in its current zoning. And the zoning, the density is actually less. So I wanted to reiterate that for the sake of all the public that wrote in their extensive comments. In addition, I would like the public to know that these projects go through extensive review for stormwater with our city now under the new manual. I think that's very important for the community to understand. And I'm going to motion that we approve this application as well as the, under number five, under rezoning and number three under zoning, um, based on my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. I appreciate those comments and I think you're right on point with those, so I appreciate that. Um, uh, second, other comments from commission members?
I'm going to go ahead and uh, second Ms. Jacobs' motion. Um, I do have, I, I completely understand um, and, and heard all the comments. And I think there were some things that it takes a lot of education on our part as planning commissioners and, and making sure people understand the fact that this is essentially a reduction in density. Um, because, you know, it is allowed for, um, they're taking a, a strong reduction. And I think what I was hearing was a little bit more of a, of a, of, of this turn of phrase of there are apartments, there, there are crime and, you know, apartments don't equal crime. Um, and, and I think that was a little disconcerting. So I, I, I don't want us to, to ignore what was, what was being said um, in terms of, you know, this rezoning that is occurring or this, or this change. Um, by allowing for multifamily, it allows, you know, it, even though it may seem as though there's more, it actually is less, but it also allows for, you know, various types of, of housing. And the distinction here is that SR one only allows for single family, but here we're, we're allowing for a, a different opportunity, but at a, at a lower density level. And I think this is something that is important across the board because we've heard this, you know, time and time again, is that based on the pace, we don't actually have enough housing um, in a ten year, in a ten year period as, as, as we are really essentially outpacing ourselves. And so not only are they seeking essentially a down zoning, but they're offering another opportunity for housing um, within the city. So um, I do commend them for, for taking these steps and, and I do, I do think it's important for us to really start to educate um, our communities about, you know, down zoning and how they're good and the impact, the positive impacts that they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Any other comments or, or questions of commission members?
I just want to echo that everything Ms. Harrison just said, um, and just wanted to go on record with that.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, I appreciate it. And, and I'd like to say uh, that it is really less units, which is good. But I think, I, I know the neighborhood sees and I've been a part of that before. Anytime you see land that was just there or, or trees, woodlands that are going to be developed, you always get concerned about it. And I think that's a natural reaction. You always like to see some stay, but these people have rights to their property and I'm, I'm, I'm fortunate that Mr. Vance Slambrook, I think we're fortunate, Mr. Vance Slambrook and the neighbors will be that are going to do it smartly and actually wisely and do a good development and, and with less units than what could be. So uh, with that, I'll, I'll call, do a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, this is hand up, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bailey, you go ahead. You had a comment, you go ahead.
Well, I, I, I'd be repeating people at this point, but I, I do, I know we're going long, but for those thirty six people that took the time to either write or participate in the meeting, I just, some of the comments that have already been made, we read everything for a reason. Um, but I have personal perspective here. I, I drive from one end of Johns Island to the other every single day and I hate the traffic. I heard a few things, I heard traffic, I heard overdevelopment, I heard flooding. Uh, those were the things that seemed to come up the most in those letters and I, I hate the traffic too. I would love to turn off development as well, but this property is going to be developed either under the current zoning or under something different. And I'm glad to see that it's going to be less units and less dense. Um, and then as far as the flooding is concerned, it does have to go through these new uh, stormwater regulations. And as Mr. Morgan said in his presentation, this is one of the few areas on Johns Island where uh, the experts say that um, there are less concerns about uh, flooding related to development. So as much as I would love to have no development and go back to the days when my grandparents lived in the little yellow house across from the McDonald's on Maybank Highway and there was nothing between the Stono Bridge and their house, I'd love to go back. That's not reality. And um, so I, I support um, the approval as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, and I, and I appreciate your comments, they make a lot of sense. Um, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Great, thank you, uh, Ms. Brian Jenkins?
Aye in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Great, Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Great, Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Lepasus?
Aye in favor.
And you're about to lose your voice, I'm glad we're making it. Thank you. And Mr. Lassane?
Aye in favor.
Thank you, and I'm in favor as well, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that's eight in favor and none opposed. So that item uh, passes. We'll go to uh, ordinance amendment number one to amend chapter fifty four of the code of city of Charleston zoning ordinance by amending article two, part three, table of permitted uses to add utility scale battery storage facilities as a principal use category and make this use as permitted within the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning district. Uh, Mr. Morgan, who's going to be speaking about this?
Ms. Harp is going to handle this issue.
Ms. Harp, you go ahead, thank you.
Good evening. Um, this is an amendment, as you say, to the table of permitted uses, article two, part three of the zoning ordinance. The amendment is to add battery storage facilities as a permitted use in the zoning ordinance. The idea behind this is to create an opportunity for power companies like Dominion or small renewable energy, energy companies to install um, storage facilities on properties that are zone light industrial or heavy industrial only. Um, and this is to assist to provide, providing power to customers. Um, this is, as you know, new technologies require changes to the ordinance. And uh, we are doing that by adding this um, use to the table of committee uses. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that. Um, I, I see there's no one signed up to speak in favor or oppose, so that'll close the public aspect out. Uh, commission members, questions, comments or motions?
I'll move for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson moves for approval. There's her second, second, Mr. Lassane, was that you?
Yes.
Is that you, Mr. Lassane? Second, great, thank you. So there's a motion, the second, if there's no other comments, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Great, Ms. Brian Jenkins?
Aye in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Great, Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Great, Ms. Lepasus? Thank you, Mr. Lassane?
Aye in favor.
Thank you, and I'm in favor as well, so that would be eight in support and none opposed. Next item on the agenda is subdivision number one, Fenwick Hall, Ollie. Fenwick Hall, Ollie, Johns Island, TMS number three, four, zero, 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 two, six, oh, approximately twelve point two, five acres. Mixed use with eighty single family detached lots. Quest subdivision, concept plan approval, zone plan unit development, village at Fenwick, Fenwick Mixed Use Residential, PUD, VFMR. Um, Mr. Morgan, who is doing this?
Me again, I continue. And I'm so sorry, Ms. Lepasus, you sound like, you sound like you are in pain over there. Um, this, this is, this is a concept plan approval for um, a twelve point two, twelve point two, five acres on Fenwick Hall, LA. And this is Fenwick Hall in the future northern Pitchfork. The project consists in the creation of a new rides away to serve seventy nine parcels for single family detached homes as well as open space as required by the PUD. The rides away and the lots are typical of, uh, and meet the requirements of the villages at Fenwick, PUD. There are wetlands on the parcel and those wetlands are proposed to be impacted. Um, as I mentioned a couple of times, the property is own plan unit development under the villages at Fenwick, PUD. The PUD allows for single family detached and attached residential units. The surrounding existing uses include single and multifamily residential and some commercial in the future. Um, this is for, again, a concept plan approval. It has gone through TRC and the TRC, the technical review committee has deemed the plans good for the concept plan. Um, just so you know, it went through TRC seven times and most of it because of stormwater. So the, we take seriously the review of stormwater. Um, and not until stormwater feels like the plans are something they can support. It will, you will not see the plans until they feel like there is something that they can support. Um, the concept plan is, does the approval of the concept plan? You will have to come back to TRC for preliminary plot and real construction plan. have to come back to TRC for preliminary plot and road construction plans and the same stringent review will take place then. So after seven reviews, the staff recommendation is for approval with certain conditions. And the conditions, if you can bring them up, Christopher, like, you know, the site is like, this is like, uh, on the south is the Northern Pitchfork, the future Northern Pitchfork. Um, they have uh the wetlands um and all the infrastructure is in there, but the conditions of the approval, one of the conditions is that the timing of the final approval of the preliminary plot and the road construction plans will depend on the construction progress of the Northern Pitchfork and the ability to provide construction access to Fenwick Hall, LA without impacting the pitch for construction. From engineering, um, they want to see that the right of ways layout and proposed in the concept plan, they're okay with that as long as when they come back for road construction plans, they show that the roads are accommodate, they're wide enough to accommodate the roadway infrastructure necessary to allow all vehicular traffic, including emergency and public service vehicles to safely circulate without reversing within the subdivision property and allow City of Charleston maintenance vehicles sufficient access to all infrastructure elements requiring service by the city. And our stormwater department condition is that road construction plans, the middles will have to meet the minimum requirements of the 2020 Stormwater Design Standards Manual in account for residual notes in the two 1121 Stormwater Review Comments. So that is, um, as I said, after seven reviews started in October of 2019 and their last meeting was on February 11th of 2021, we recommend approval with the conditions listed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harp. I appreciate it. Um, the applicants are, I think, with us, Mr. Water and Mr. Esposito. Is that correct, Chloe?
Yes, I've just promoted them to panelists, so they should be joining us shortly.
Great. Gentlemen, y'all, gentlemen, y'all go ahead whenever you're ready.
Wonderful. Can I, can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and thank you, Anna, for, uh, for that introduction. And uh, we appreciate yours and the rest of staff's uh support throughout the review process. Um, it's very, been a very extensive one for many good reasons. Um, Mr. Chairman and uh commission members, thank you for your chance or for the chance to present tonight. Um, we appreciate everyone hanging in there. I know it's been a, been a long evening and so I'll keep it a, you know, short and to the point. Um, as, as we've, uh, you know, has been stated, we've been through an extensive planning process to ensure this is an excellent site design. Um, a, a really neat feature, if, if anyone's not aware, is there's a pretty uh awesome uh oak alley that exists um at the end of Fenwick Hall, LA, um, which uh half, half of that alley is actually on this property. So very uh, very neat um oak alley that's being preserved fully um as a part of this project. Um, the single family detached dwellings are all alley loaded product, um, which we believe will create a visual appealing street frontage experience both along the Northern Pitchfork. So there'll be homes facing, confronting on the northern, the future Northern Pitchfork, um, as well as a main public road that bisects the property. Uh, the road and lot layout um has been interwoven around key open spaces, uh built around the existing grand trees uh and existing wetlands. Um, there is a large wetland area that will remain intact, um, but we are disturbing some wetlands. Um, in accordance with the PUD, um, the proposed development provides front and rear alley buffers along the northern property lines as well as uh leisure trails throughout the development. Um, we've, we've implemented low impact uh stormwater design solutions uh into the site and uh in stormwater design. Um, 54 parallel parking spaces are provided, which is not required by the PUD um or, or any other regulation, but it was important to the project team to ensure ample parking for residents. Um, the proposed main road through the project will actually complement the Northern Pitchfork Road section, which has a parallel parking uh on the road as well. The development will be served by public water and sewer and will meet the 2020 Stormwater Design Standards Manual. Um, and I think it's important to note, all of the stormwater uh from this property flows into Penny Creek and we are not in a special protection area. Um, proposed density is below the allowable density of nine dwelling units per upland acre. So we're currently proposing uh 79 single family detached uh dwelling units. Um, there's also a great opportunity for interconnectivity to the uh adjacent property, which was just purchased by the city. Um, so that the main uh road that, as you can see, um, on these, on our plans, uh, will provide connectivity to the city parcel. Um, direct access to, you know, not only to the Northern Pitchfork, but to that adjacent development, uh should minimize traffic uh on Maybank Highway um in relieve congestion. Um, and I also wanted to note that uh from an architectural standpoint, um, it's all cement board siding, architectural peeling, single family detached cottages um with a, you know, maintain yards in uh, in exterior. So um should be just a, an, an excellent development for the community. And um with that, happy to, happy to answer any questions. And Jason Esposito, um, he's, he's on the, on the, in the meeting as well. If there's any questions for, for him.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if that completes y'all's um presentation, that, that's fine. I don't think there's anyone signed up. Chloe, you'll correct me if I'm wrong to speak. So that would close the public aspect of this. And um commission members, um, uh, um, comments, whatever. I, I did get a, Ms. Lepasus is losing her voice, but she texted me and she's still with us, that she'd like to make a motion to approve this. So Sunday, if you'll just say yes over the, over the, so we all get it for the record, so it's not me making the motion, it's you, but I'm making it on your behalf. Is that correct? Well, I think she's with us. I'm wrong.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I knew you losing your voice. So Ms. Lepasus would like to make a motion to approve the subdivision. Uh, Ms. Johnson, did you have something?
I just wanted a second motion.
Great. Thank you. And Ms. Lepasus makes a motion to approve. Yeah.
Ms. Jacobs, Ms. Jacobs has her hand raised. And so does uh Mr. Lasain.
I'm gonna get the second and then I'm gonna get the second from Ms. Johnson, which we did. Ms. Jacobs, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanted to commend staff for putting the um extensive technical review information in our packet because the public now gets to see how much work the city staff does with regards to these subdivision applications before they even get close to us. Um, if, just for the record, I would like to say for the public, there was 31 pages of a preliminary drainage study that took seven reviews to get to us to approve. So I really appreciate that. And I just want to reiterate that. Um, I'm also going to vote to approve this, but I did have just a couple of questions from my understanding. Um, there's a reference to what they call a vegetated shelf in the PUD. Is that like a vegetated buffer around a wetland? That's just from my edification, please? The terminology?
Chloe, can you help us with that? I mean, I'm not Chloe, miss, miss it. Yeah. You want to help us with that, please?
Anybody can answer.
I think what it's referring to, and Anna, you chime in, but um we now require in our new stormwater regulations that there be a shelf. Uh, as you get into a stormwater pond, as you get a little bit deeper from the edge, there's a shelf that helps with aquatic vegetation, which also helps to filter water. And it, it also adds to the aesthetics of the uh stormwater ponds.
So it's like, it's like a buffer then. It's probably just.
Yeah, within the pond itself. It's a shelf within the pond that gets water on it and all.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much. And then this was just something that caught my attention. I'd like a little explanation. It was page seven of this 31 pages of the, you know, preliminary drainage study. And it said in the resolution column, there's a reference in the fourth paragraph of a variance request to allow an increase in volume to design point number four is to be further assessed at the time of road construction. I'm just curious about who assesses this variance? Is that a variance that's assessed within the TRC?
No, I believe that will be this, uh, this all has to do with stormwater. And unfortunately, I'm not a stormwater expert, but I do believe that uh you have to present, Ricky's probably more familiar with the variance process, with the stormwater variance process than I am.
Okay. Maybe we can have the, that discussion offline. Because it, it just, I would, if you could email me that information, that would be great because I would like to know that for future information. Um.
What comment was it? What you said?
It's, it's pa, it's page seven of 31, fourth paragraph about the, about the variance request. I'd like to know what is this variance, who handles it, and what's the current criteria given to give a variance when they looking at it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I, I'm good. I just, you know, I realize that this point.
And I appreciate you reading all the, I appreciate you reading the fine print too in detail. So thank you. Um, so there's a motion by Ms. Lepasus, second by Ms. Johnson to approve this subdivision request. Any other comments, questions of commission members? If not, we'll do a roll call vote.
Chairman.
Great. Ms. Lasain?
Yeah.
Ms. Lasain, you go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to uh make a statement and, and ask a question. Um, I am so happy to see uh the northern uh part of the Pitchfork proceeding. I think, you know, this is something the city has been working on for many, many years. Mr. Morgan has been with it for a long time and, and I'm so happy to see that that's moving. That's such an important addition to Johns Island. We've heard a lot about traffic out there and this will be an important um traffic mitigation technique. Um, the question is about the alley itself, and I'm going to support this. Um, but I'm just curious about the oak alley. And as, as was mentioned, the half of the alley is in this, um, is in the PUD. Uh, is there any buffering between the, the trees of, in the alley and sort of the, the, and the development? Just visually, I'm curious about that.
That red area right there, do you see? That's a buffer.
And Harry, there's a, a, um, if, if I may, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a, there's a short, I believe it's a four foot, we call it decorative, like a masonry courtyard wall, like a masonry courtyard wall that runs along that alley. So it's kind of an architectural feature and uh.
Okay.
Thrown into the PUD. But yeah, so there is a.
Yeah, just so unclear, the, the trees that, that Anna was referring to, you know, that are sort of in that pink peach color, whatever you call that, that's the alley itself, right?
That's right.
Okay, that's not a buffer from the alley. That is the alley.
That is the alley, yes. And we have, you can see in the design, we, we, we're not loading any houses or anything off of it. We've got a road that kind of runs alongside it. And then there's some green space and then the, this uh decorative masonry wall, if you will, and then the alley.
Okay. Thank you. That's it?
Lasain, if I could add, um, you know, the, the whole PUD was very much predicated on the preservation of those trees. And none other than Mr. Eric Schultz, who we all know loves every single tree in this town, you know, came up with the standards that are in that PUD. And I think felt very comfortable that those trees in that alley were going to be protected. It's a national register element uh there. I mean, it's an incredible piece of Johns Island's character.
I recommend any, any of you never seen that alley, you should go check it out because it is really beautiful.
It's pretty.
And, and I, I'll just put in a couple of other pitches for the, the 14 years coming Northern Pitchfork, 14 years. But what is going to happen in this area here is just amazing. They're going to be oaks in the middle of these roundabouts. There are oaks in these areas. There are oaks in here. This is going to be one of the most beautiful roads in, on Johns Island when this is done. It's really going to be impressive. And having the houses front on the road here is right in line with what the overall objective of that was. They don't have individual driveways, things like that. So that will add to kind of a, a good streetscape as you're coming through this area on Johns Island.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Thank you, Ms. Lasain. And thank, thank you, Mr. Esposito. Uh, if there's no other comments or questions, we've got a, a motion by Ms. Lepasus, second by Ms. Johnson. We'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Thanks. Ms. Bryant Jenkins?
Aye in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Great. Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Lepasus, I'm gonna pick on you again. I think I heard aye in favor.
I heard aye in favor.
Ms. Lasain?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Lasain? I'm in favor as well. So that's uh eight in favor and none opposed. The next item on our agenda is.
We should everybody's time.
We get back to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So um, it should be at zonings, I believe. I'm sorry. I'm just looking for that page. Here it is. So uh, zonings number one is 2181 Wapu Hall Road, Wapu Hall, James Island, TMS number three, four, three, oh, one, oh, 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 three, two, point, three, seven acres. Requesting zoning, request zoning of single family residential SR one was zone R four in the county. Mr. Morgan?
And uh this one, and, and actually, if you all want to take these two together, 2181 Wapu Hall and.
Let me, I'll read number.
Parkway Drive. They're adjacent to one another. And they are both the same situation.
Perfect. I'm gonna read. Let me.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Uh, I apologize.
All right. I'm just gonna read number two in as well.
Wapu Hall Road is SR one and then um Parkway Drive is SR two, but they are immediately adjacent. They are both coming from R four. The reason for the SR two is that the lot is so small, we don't want to create a non-conforming lot. Um, the lot is smaller than the standard SR one uh requirement.
So we're going to take those two together. Number two is 2182 Parkway Drive, Wapu Hall, James Island, TMS number three, four, three, oh, one, oh, oh, one, four, four, point, two acres. Requesting zoning was SR two was zoned R four in the county. Um, we don't have anyone to sign up to speak on those, I don't believe. Great. Uh, motion by Mr. Lasain. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry? So Mr. Lasain makes a motion to approve uh number one and two on the rezonings. And the second, I think, Mr. Bailey, correct?
Correct.
Did I get that right? Great. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Uh, if there's not, if there's any questions or comments, if not, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Bryant Jenkins?
Aye in favor.
Uh, Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Thanks. Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Lepasus? One more last time. Thank you. You did good. Ms. Lasain?
Aye in favor.
Great. And I'm in favor. So that's eight in favor and none opposed. I believe, I think I'm uh, that concludes everything on the agenda, correct? Now, we didn't do the minutes with y'all's permission. I'm sorry. With y'all's permission, I'd like to do the minutes next time if we can. I hadn't even had a chance to reveal them all. So with y'all's permission, if we can uh prove those at the next meeting, I would appreciate that. Is there any objection to that?
No objection. Do you need us to make a motion to defer?
Yeah, why don't we do that just so it's official? Uh, uh, Ms. Harrison moves. So do we defer the minutes till next meeting? Is there a second? Thanks, Ms. Lasain. I, I was gonna do a roll call vote. And is anyone opposed to this? If not, we'll do it, we'll go ahead and do it unanimously unless there's anyone speaks up that they're opposed to it. All, so we're, we're all in favor of uh, of, of deferring the minutes until next meeting. I think that concludes the meeting. And um, I appreciate everyone's time and uh y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Night.
Thanks, everyone.
All right.
Thank you all.
Good night.